Welcome to the June 11th, 2018 meeting of the Marquette City Commission. I'd like to call this meeting in order. Would you please rise with me and say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
City Clerk, could we have the real call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Plord?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Mayor Protam Stonehouse?
Mayor Campana?
Here. Commissioner Stonehouse is not here. Could I please have a motion to excuse with a reason? Commissioner Plord?
Your Honor, I move that we excuse Mayor Protam Stonehouse to do with the fact he's out of town.
Second. Commissioner Schlegel?
Second.
All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That carries six zero. Next we come to the approval of the agenda. Commissioner Plord?
Your Honor, I'd like to switch new business item number six with new business item number seven. Not removing anything for the agenda, just switching the time when we take up that particular item.
Okay, we will do that. Basically what we're doing is flip-flopping it. Next we have...
Approve it.
No, you don't.
As amended.
Oh, we're going to approve the agenda as amended. Thank you. Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Who made the motion?
Commissioner Plord made the motion. I seconded it. Now we have to vote.
He didn't make...
He didn't make the motion. He just asked to switch the two items.
So, we need a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Commissioner Plord?
Your Honor, I move we approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you. We need a second. Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
All those... okay. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That carries six zero. Now we come to announcements. Since we have a lot of motivated people here tonight who want to do things for the city, I would like to bring this up that the city has 20 boards, committees, and authorities made up of resident volunteers. These committees exist to study and advise the city on areas of concern within the city. Couple of them are Board of Zoning Appeals, which currently has five openings, and Harbor Advisory Committee, which has four openings. We could use members on those two committees, among others. Because of term limits and turnovers, we are regularly looking for residents who are willing to volunteer a few hours each month to help make Marquette a better place. It's an opportunity to do something productive, meet some interesting people, and help shape Marquette. If you'd like to step up and help, please contact any of us city commissioners, call the city manager's office, or go online. We depend on our residents to help make Marquette a better place. This is your opportunity to do something positive for the city. Now, tonight, we're going to come to at one point, public comments. We have two public comments. Each, any person can speak for three minutes, a public comment, about anything you care to speak about. Three minutes. You may also reserve time during the first public comment if you just want to come up and say, "I want to reserve time to speak on one of our new business items." You can say, "I want to reserve time to speak on that item." Sit down, and then when we get to that item, you'll have an opportunity to speak three minutes. Hope that's clear. Next, we're going to come to boards and committees. We have one appointment tonight. The appointment is Evan Bonzel to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for an unexpired term ending 2/1 of 2019. Do we have a motion to approve this? Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that we appoint Evan Bonzel to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for an unexpired term ending February 1st, 2019.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Frazier?
A second.
Any comments?
Comments?
Commissioner Frazier, anything? No? See, none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That carries six zero. Now, we come to our first public comment of the evening. Again, it's a time when a resident may speak to us. They may also reserve time to speak on an upcoming agenda item. I'm going to open public comment. I'm going to start first with City Manager Angeli.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm taking this opportunity to speak first because I suspect there will be a number of people that want to address item, now item seven, Hartwood Forestland discussion. And my purpose is to give you a little history so that when you do, or if you do decide to get up and speak, you have some basis of where I sit or where the administration sits here. Many of you may not know, or many of you may know the history of what we're talking about, but please bear with me as I go through it. The city purchased the Hartwood Forestland property in 2005 for $5 million. In 2010, the ad hoc committee was formulated and prepared a report and recommendation to the planning commission on what to do with that property. The planning commission approved a plan that was addressed with some alterations or some amendments that had come from the Citizens Committee and presented that plan to the city commission for approval on April 25th, 2011. Some various things have happened in between, but on October 30th of 2006, the city entered into a permit with the Cayman on Trail Network for the use of that property to develop and maintain bike trails. The permit is very specific to how many trails and what trails would be developed, and they have been in control of that property ever since, or at least in control of the trails. What I'd also like... I'm going to find my sheet stuff here. What I'd also like the public to realize is that part of the city master plan and the Hartwood Ad hoc Committee plan was to pursue the sale and development of specific parcels of property, which includes, but is not limited, to the properties that are currently up for an RFQ. RFQ means Request for Qualification. What we are trying to determine is who might be qualified to potentially purchase and develop the property. It's not a purchase. It's not a sales offer. Believe it or not, my office, as well as Dennis Stackwitz's office, regularly entertains visits from people who want to buy things or want to develop things, and we never see them again, or when we do see them again, they don't have the money or the means to follow through. So what we are looking to do is to identify for the commission the potential for developers. Like I said, it's not an offer to sell. Once those qualifications are reviewed and accepted, they would be presented to the commission for a decision. Some additional information. There's a bigger picture here. There's a larger story, if you will, about what's happening in the city. And it directly involves the property that I'm talking about. At about this time next year, we are going to lose the tax revenue from the We Energy Electricity Plant in North Marquette. At its peak, in 2013, we would receive $1.6 million annually in tax revenue, which is general fund money. We have since been... That number has been decreasing over the last three years because of tribunal cases in anticipation of that property eventually being closed a year from now. Currently, we received about $1.1 million in taxes. I have been tasked with replacing the revenue, or the lost revenue, from that closing of that facility. In other words, I've already absorbed about $600,000 in cuts, and I have to find a way to either replace or absorb another million dollars. Absorbing another million dollars means loss of services. It means loss of staff. It means loss of a lot of different things, which I'm sure this community would not appreciate. So, with that in mind, we came up with a plan to sell several properties that are owned within the city. From my perspective, not necessary for us to own. You know, this is kind of wasting our valuable space. They include Founder's Landing, one more parcel down there, number two, Cliff's Dock Property, which is 36 or so acres, which will become available here, and the five parcels that are in the Hartwood property. The city purchased the Hartwood property for $5 million. We still owe over $2.6 million. Our annual budget places about $665,000 a year towards the Hartwood Bond and Reserve Fund. In other words, that's $665,000 that if I could eliminate that bond payment, like a car payment, I would have that money to use to balance or counter the closing of the We plant. We have seven years left to pay. So that's seven years. That's $665,000. It's a significant amount of money. So, the overall big picture here is that if I can sell properties, and I've estimated these properties, all of them that I've talked to, roughly $3.7 million in value. We've had many of them appraised, so we're close. The total debt to pay off the Founder's Bond, which is still in existence, and the Hartwood Bond, is about $4 million. So I can get within $300,000 of that outstanding debt by selling all these properties. With money that is in reserve, I can eliminate those debts completely, and I can then use that money in the general fund for normal operations here in the city. So that's the underlying reason as to why this is happening. And just to continue along those lines, I, from a personal standpoint, I understand perfectly the importance of the trails. I understand perfectly the importance of the trails and the people to the economics of this community. I understand that the trails and their use has put this community on the map, so to speak. I have no doubt about that. There is no question in my mind or in my staff's mind. Our position from the beginning, when we knew that the Hartwood property was going to be up for sale, was to create in that process a system or a plan where the bike trails would be accommodated. In other words, whenever we sell a piece of property, we have something called a development agreement, where we sell the property to someone, and through the RFQ and the RFP process, RFP is Request for Proposal, we sign an agreement with that person that we will sell you this property if, if you meet a certain timeline, if you meet a certain dollar amount, if you create a certain structure or a certain development. And in this case, if you accommodate the trail systems. Now, by accommodate, I'm not saying that you have to do everything. It's kind of a general term, so I'm not being specific about that. But my thoughts always from the beginning have been to include the NTN or anybody else of interest in that discussion. Not to wipe out any trails, not to get rid of any trails, not to just say the heck with biking and sell property just because we want money. It's not the case. Never has been. Just to go back a little bit further, I mean, we are following the plans that have been established by previous commissions since 2010. This is not my creation or our creation. This is something that has been in a plan and been approved through public process, a very difficult public process, I might add. I happen to be wrong when the Hartwood plan was put together, and it was a vast group of people from varying walks of life, bikers, non-bikers, developers, and the plan is very, very...it's not complex, but it's very thorough. So, I have met on a few occasions with the leadership of NTN. I have met with other leaders of other biking groups, and I've expressed my thoughts. And at this stage of the game, I think, I see this as an opportunity, an opportunity to see what is available. As I mentioned earlier, this is the RFQ process. This is not a asking people to offer any, make any offers to purchase. It's just a first step in a process that I would consider to be lengthy. And if you know at all how government works, it isn't fast at all. I see this as an opportunity, for example, to bring the biking community in to our way of doing things and helping us, you know, develop a development agreement, or helping us develop a process for selling the property. Ideally, I'd like to see everybody happy in the end. I know there are at least two interested in developers out there, parcel 35 and maybe some other parcels, that are interested in doing just that, with sitting down with the biking community and us so that there's a win-win for everybody. I think that's important. I really do. My staff thinks that's important. I believe the commission believes that to be important as well. And I don't have never sensed in any form or sense of the word that there hasn't been any, or there has been any disregard of the biking community. Now, I know these parcels are precious. I know these parcels mean a lot. Well, they mean a lot to us, too. And I don't mean to be this in a negative way, but you have to keep something in mind that that $5 million price tag is being paid by every citizen in this city of Marquette through their taxes. Trail network is used by a smaller portion. So as a city administrator and as a city commission, we have to represent the other public as well when we talk about balancing our budget, providing services. I mean, we have to take them into consideration. This is not just about administration and biking community, or biking property, or biking trails. It directly relates to my overall budget and how it affects the services I might provide to the rest of the city, which I am also responsible to. And my conversations with NTN have been good. I think they understand where I am coming from, and from my perspective, they are willing to work with me, at least through this process. And all I ask at this point is that you let myself and my staff work through the process. This is a very open process. There will not...I do not make any unilateral decisions. I make decisions on what to present to the commission. I may present options. I may present choices. But the commission makes the final decision. At any time during this process, they can say, "No." They can say, "We're not selling it," or they can say, "We don't like this." But I think it's very premature to say that now. We don't even know what could happen. It could be something great. It could be something that really enhances the biking community. I don't know what that is. I'm not a developer, but I'm not so shallow that I can't dream a little bit or think a little bit that maybe something is out there. I would at least like to hear, to see. I understand that there...one of the conversations I had with NTN is that, you know, they may have contacts with developers that like to do these kind of things with biking communities. I'd like to hear what they can come up with. I mean, there's just an opportunity here, I think, for all of us to win. It may turn out to be a wasted energy, but it's my wasted energy. It's not yours. My goal is to bring something to the commission and to the public that is acceptable. And if it isn't, well, it isn't. You know, it's just the way it is. But, one last note is that with regard to the NTN, I did waive the RFQ process, and if they have an interest in purchasing parcel 35, I told them I'd be willing to consider that as part, one of the options that we bring forward. So, I'm not throwing anything out. I'm not excusing anything or ignoring anything. So...but please understand, from my perspective, I have to do a more thorough job for the entire citizenry of the city of Marquette, which is paying for that property. So, that's about all I have, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. Dennis, did you have anything you want to add?
Thanks, Mike. I really just wanted to clarify for the group because I know there's a lot of questions in the community, and commissioners have brought it up, that folks don't really understand the RFQ process. It's kind of foreign. And, you know, typically when the city sells property, we go right to an RFP. We want to see what you're going to do, and we want to see the money upfront. And often, those decisions are based upon the cash in hand and what can you do for us. But with this property being unique and the significant planning that has gone on in this property since at least 2004, I mean, we were planning for this property before we even bought it. We felt it was important to do an RFQ, which is a Request for Qualifications. It's kind of like online dating, except it deals with property, right? We want to know who you are. We want to know how much money you have. We want to know what you've done and where you've done it at, so we can think about whether or not we're going to let you into our community to start having discussions about how we can have a mutual benefit that is good for the citizens as a whole and all of the user groups of the property. So, really, it's kind of like a vetting process and a screening test, more or less, if you were to do a background check on someone that's going to do development. That's what a Request for Qualification is. We want to know who you are, and so we can check to see and make sure that you are who you say you are, and you have the ability to do something with us, to help us achieve our vision and goals, which are...a lot of things can be addressed out here. We've talked about housing prices in Marquette, and the need for more of that missing middle, housing that would be not your low-end affordable housing, but something that people can afford to live in the city of Marquette, something that's environmentally friendly, that fits in, creates tax base, supports quality life, and also protects the environment and allows for the recreation out there. And in order for someone to, as the city manager has said, in order for someone to come in and talk to us, they're going to have to make it through the qualifications process. So, just thanks for the opportunity to be able to expand on that a little bit.
Thank you. Okay, we are still in public comment. So, if anyone wishes to address the commission to talk about anything or to reserve time for a future item, now would be your time. Please use the podium in front. You've got three minutes. We've got a clock here that will time you. We need your name and local address, please.
Okay. I'm Kerry Gottlieb, 1076 South Lake Street. I'd like to reserve time for new business item seven, but I'd also like to speak now. City Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Angeli, fellow residents, I come here tonight not just as a resident or chair of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, although I am both, but as president of the Cayman on Trail Network, or NTN. On May 24th, the NTN Executive Director, Lori Hasworth, and I met with City Manager Angeli and other city officials to help us understand the city's objectives in regards to the recently published RFQ on the Hartwood property. We then wrote a letter of response to the RFQ for specifically parcel 35. I will summarize that response in a minute, which you may have already seen. Before that, I'd like to say NTN was founded in 2001 as a nonprofit with a mission to develop and maintain non-motorized multi-use trails to promote active recreation in this area. To accomplish this, we have worked with government and private landowners to develop approximately 60 miles of single track, 78 miles of ski trails, and over 40 miles of winter-use single-track trails. The Hartwood and the trails there are one of the primary reasons many choose to live in Marquette. Parcel 35, which was designated for potential residential or commercial development by the Hartwood Forestland Ad hoc Committee, has remained undeveloped except for NTN trails, which spread to the rest of the Hartwood from there. This parcel is adjacent to the NTN Trailhead, which is on parcel 13, which is not for sale. We believe that parcel 35 is integral to the trail experience that has put Marquette on the national radar. At this time, we, NTN, would prefer that parcel 35, given its centrality to the south trails, be removed from the RFQ process so that we can work with the city to develop a plan that would harmonize the needs of the city and the community. Should that fail, we would hope that we could purchase that property ourselves, and that be considered the primary option. And then, if our purchase fails, we would ask that the city ask developers to collaborate with the NTN to preserve what the city, NTN, and the community have achieved. We also suggest that the city secure permanent public trail easements through all the Hartwood, and ask that developers work with NTN to maintain as much as possible the current trails, including those on parcels nine, 10, 11, and 12, which have the active RFQ solicitations. In fact, NTN has met with at least one developer interested in those four parcels with a commitment to retain trails throughout them. We would gladly meet with any other person interested, any group. While we recognize the need to generate tax revenue, we hope that you appreciate the value of trails, the community, and their impact on the quality of life and the overall community property values. We only have one chance to craft the future of the Hartwood, and that opportunity is now. NTN is aware that we do not meet many of the qualifications of the RFQ, but we do believe that there are considerations that are in our favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Name is Peter Zanti, 2002 Werner Street. Point of order. People are not able to be in the room and hearing, and if perhaps people could move that way, and the people are in the hallway and behind the closed door there, could be granted access so they could participate, please?
They're out. Excuse me, there are speakers.
Okay.
No, they're not.
At any rate, I'd like to reserve time to speak later on the Hartwood project.
Do we have like maybe capacity, room capacity?
Sure we do.
We're over.
The chairs are four and five inches.
The hallway is full.
Slide.
Slide.
Good job, Peter.
You know, and until recently, we had windows that opened. But our remodeling has put in no draft windows here. Sorry.
Do we have everybody in?
Pretty much.
We're good?
Thank you.
Are we good?
Do we have some more room?
Okay, let us continue. Name and address, please.
All right. I'm Lori Hasworth. I live at 611 Craig Street. I'm also the executive director of the NTN. Tonight, I'm here actually to represent the members and supporters of the NTN that have contributed many thousands of hours of valued volunteer time and contributed significant funding to build a world-class, non-motorized trail network system in and connecting to the city of Marquette. Thanks to the city for being forward, thinking back in 2006, and... Thanks to the city for being forward, thinking back in two thousand and six and signing an agreement with the NTN organization that allowed a formal relationship for the adoption and development of the trails to be established. I think both the NTN and the city have found that that agreement has had much room for interpretation, but we agree that it was the catalyst for establishing something pretty special at the south trails. Since that formal agreement twelve years ago, we know a lot has changed. Many people have moved here, established businesses in Marquette, and pointed their cars to Marquette for extended vacations. Excuse me, specifically because of the trails. The city of Marquette has a world-class trail system that is recognized as only one of only forty International Mountain Cycling Association Ride Centers in the world. Yes, the city of Marquette has a world-class trail system, thanks to the efforts of many of the people that are here tonight in this room. Anybody that has volunteered or provided funding to the trails in Marquette, I'd like you to raise your hand if you've participated in any way to the trail experience here. So, these are the folks that are concerned and they should be. The trails, they're worried the trails and the trail experience are at risk with the current RFQ. We keep hearing that the trails will be fine, but will the trail experience? And how do we define what a trail experience is to someone that doesn't use the trails? So, I was thinking about this quite a bit, and the best scenario I could come up with was people choose to drive around Presque Isle and not just cruise down Washington Street and Marquette because it offers a certain experience. One mile of experience at Presque Isle Drive does not equal one mile of experience on Washington Street. I think everybody can relate to that. So, one mile of mindfully carved trail into an undeveloped landscape does not equal one mile of trail connecting through a condo development. Can we be certain the current RFQs will not only preserve trails, but will protect? And why not say enhance the trail experience that has put Marquette on the map? Because we want it to stay on the map. We only, this will only be done with intention. The trail community needs the city to truly embrace the trails as infrastructure and an economic and recreational asset, because this is our one chance to craft a great tomorrow for the Hartwood property. Again, we request parcel thirty-five be pulled from the RFQ process as it serves as the vital gateway to the world-class trail experience and offers some of the only easy terrain for beginner trails, room for trailhead parking, expansion, and potential future supporting facilities such as equipment storage, community, a community building, and skills area. We also urge very mindful work with developers on parcels nine through twelve. My offer last week still stands to take any of the commissioners on a tour of the trail. We did take a tour with a couple of you on Saturday, and I look forward to a future where the city and NTN work as one to create great trail experiences. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike Kates. I'm at one-two-three East College. I'm actually, you know, it's a little weird to see a guy wearing a stethoscope in a, you know, at a meeting like this. I'm actually one of the family medicine residents at the hospital here. And every single time we have new residents or prospective residents coming through the hospital, they say, "What is it that your community has to offer?" And I can look right at them and I can give them the biggest smile in the world and I can say, "We have the coolest community in the world." And probably the central part of that community is the trails. I cannot tell you how many times a group of people, friends, you know, we go ride the trails, we go to Black Rocks, we go, we spend money at Downwind, at Quick Stop. It's a community. It's not just a piece of trail. And I would just want to echo the, I just want to echo the sentiment that it's not about trails, it's not about, it's not about, you know, how much path there is. It's about the quality and it's about the quality of the community. I moved to the UP because I love the woods. I love nature. I love fishing on the carp. I want things, I want as much nature and as much, you know, virgin woods as I can possibly have. And, you know, and I, as, in all my studies, you know, I think we have a kind of a broken, I understand that we need to live within the world of economics, but the system we have in terms of, you know, development and putting business before community, it's a broken system. And so, I think we have an opportunity as this community, right here, right now, to put the community first, and I think our community will benefit economically. The fact that we have such a vibrant cycling, microbrewing community, all the races we have, I mean, the Margie is on the map. I talked to my friend out in Washington, never been to Michigan. He's like, "I heard about the Margie. This race is awesome." If we sacrifice our community, you know, the long-term health of the community for short-term monetary thing, the community is going to suffer. And so, I am super excited to hear that you want to talk with this group here. I think that's awesome. We want to talk too. I just think everybody here wants to be sure that we are taking this opportunity to make something new here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Wally Pearson, thirty-two oh four Allen Beach Road. I guess I'll continue with that theme. I'm here actually as a president of the orthopedic group in Marquette, and I can say, five years ago, we made an effort, actually didn't have to make much of an effort as a group. We decided that we wanted to subspecialize with orthopedic surgeons. Well, Michigan's a lousy place to practice medicine, but Marquette's a great place to recreate, and we acquired five subspecialized orthopedic surgeons by little effort. They came to us through outside magazine, the national publications, due to the awareness of what we have here. So, they, these magazines have their finger on the pulse of what's going on in the community. I was just out west. I was just in Sedona. They are, they're there biopsying what's going on. If we change our access to our public land, that free advertisement that resulted in five surgeons in our group, with sixty employees, with families, with kids in the school systems, with spouses opening businesses here, it's really hard to quantitate that impact, you know, at your trailhead, at your tax dollars, but I can tell you, it probably far outweighs than losing access to that land. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lucy Grove, eleven oh four Tonti. I just wanted to say that there's a much broader scope here besides just biking trails. There are so many people in the community that are hikers, that walk the trails with their pets. And I personally live a couple of minutes from the trail. I'm out there two, three times a day, and while I'm not a hardcore biker and I don't come from all over to use our trails, I walk those trails every day. I see dozens of people walking those trails every day. So, please, as you think of the trails, remember, it's so much more than just bikers. It's hikers. It's cross-country skiers. It's snowshoes. It's pet owners. Thank you.
Good evening. John Reinertson, one thousand Alaway, and a neighbor. And coincidentally, she beat me to the mic, but I will echo her statements that I am a hiker, a snowshoeer, a cross-country skier, and yes, a mountain biker and a fat tire biker. But there are, all kinds of people are using those trails, and I think it's very easy to just assume it's all about biking, and it's so much more than that. I'm a relatively new resident. We moved here last July. I'm retired. I had a choice of where I wanted to move, and the trail network and the outdoor activity that you can have in Marquette is a large reason that we moved here and are recommending to our friends, what an incredible place this is to live. I've been fortunate to recreate in other very noteworthy places like Jackson Hole, like Moab, Utah, that are well-known for their biking, their hiking, their mountain biking. And I hope that Marquette doesn't become quite the draw that those places have, but Marquette is unique in having the opportunity to design from the ground up an incredible trail network that ended up growing a bit maybe too organically and too quickly in places like Moab. And so, I just encourage that you leverage the kind of support for the outdoors and together with the needing to continue to develop Marquette and do it in a very smart, economically right, and environmentally right approach. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is George Meister. I'm with GEI Consultants. We're a full-service engineering company, I guess. Not that the trails aren't important, but I've only got a couple of minutes, so I'm going to speak on a little something different. We're a full-service engineering company. We're located just a couple of blocks from here. In fact, several of my coworkers walked up here with me after work to attend the meeting because we knew there were some interesting things happening here tonight. You might not realize that in the building down in the old sandstone in the corner of Front and Barriga, we actually have thirty-seven full-time employees in there right now. There is also an office on Iron River with about twenty and an office on Iron Mountain with about another dozen, not to mention our national presence elsewhere. You know, and what I'm here to talk about is that statement of qualifications for the stormwater management plan to be a little more specific, item eight, which I also mentioned now, I'd like to speak briefly on again during the new business item. You know, some of the items that were on there were, for evaluation, were commitment from a firm. You know, we've, just like the rest of the folks here, we live here, we work here, you know, we do everything here. We are vested, we're personally vested in the success of projects that we work on in our hometown. You know, we have to answer to our neighbors here, answer to you guys on the work that we do. So, we're committed to good work and valuable work. Another one was, you know, the qualifications of staff in our project portfolio, and I hope you guys had a chance to take a look at our statement of qualifications, but I think what you can find is, you know, we have very highly qualified staff, particularly in water resources work, right here in our Marquette office, and if we needed to, we could reach out and get support from other offices as well. But we have these folks right here, and we identified about a half dozen very talented people in our statement that we're working on that are based out of this office. You know, and one of the things that we've run into over the years is that there's a perception that perhaps we don't have experts here locally, that you have to reach out or go to the metro area somewhere, a big city to find experts. But the fact of it is that several of the people in our office, myself included, present at national conferences for our peers and experts in our fields, present cutting-edge projects we're working on or high-end technical projects we're working on. So, we do have experts here and in this office. And then one last thing, I guess, that I'd mention is on this SAW grant, you know, we've done and are working on and have completed about eight of these so far here in the UP. So, we're very familiar with all the components of it, you know, from the inventory and the assessments and all the way through the financial analysis and everything else that goes along with them. You know, and I guess the one last thing for this moment here was oftentimes in these RFQs, location is a part of them. In fact, one later tonight on new business item has a location as part of the evaluation. This one didn't. We feel that if it had, that would have boosted us beyond, even as a very close scoring as it was. So, thank you.
Frank Chevero, three fifty East Woods Marquette, to speak on Hartwood. These are my opinions. On a positive note, the Lower Harbor Park storage shed was moved from the water's edge to the northeast corner of the lot. That's the kind of thinking we need to employ more of. May twenty-ninth, Mr. Fraser said, "One person who comments has a great view of the lake." He also twice mentioned that we can easily see the lake from the boulevard, all in response to people's criticism about the blocked view from Front Street. He missed the point on both notions. My location has nothing to do with this matter. He's the second member who's fallen into this trap, unaware that when all this began, I lived on North Front Street, opposing twelve-story towers ten blocks away. I fight to save our lakeshore so other residents and visitors can also enjoy the view and so people aren't lied to by being told their views would be preserved. And yes, we can see the lake from the boulevard, but this isn't the route that visitors pass when entering town, getting their first impressions of us. Although most won't notice the difference, they'll never know what a grand entrance they missed as they passed the pitiful backs of those condos in styles which are indicative of what they traveled here to get away from. History repeated itself again. First, the south roundabout opened just in time for the first phase to block our view. Now, the view from much of Father Marquette Park is blocked, just as this effort went into improving the park. There's too much vegetation removed there and too much cement for the land surface, and the nice island of trees below was lost just to achieve a gradient. I'm a major accessibility advocate, but not to the compromise of the resource. In fact, that statue should be oriented toward the southeast, where there's still an open water view. May fourteenth, Mr. Stonehouse said he liked Oregon's inland communities, but its coastal places lack the access we have. That's no excuse for Marquette not to be the best it can be. He also said sensitivity will be used with parcel two. That's impossible from what we both heard from the architect. His proposed three-story hotel and condos will block the view, and neither will include retail, the same lies and letdown as at Lakeshore site. We cannot trust when we ended up with this after all the public discussion and visioning which this board promoted. Every second of those people's time was wasted, the Lakeshore Task Forces too. Volunteer elsewhere, people, where you're appreciated. Twenty years of public planning and input turned into fulfillment of one man's dream because everything is decided by who's who. This board gave the rail yard to him, except for the hotel, which looks nice, but is the same design we see across the country along freeway interchanges. I urge this board to approve only what was worthy of the outstanding location. Aside from some nice design features along the trail and boardwalk, this board bungled every aspect of founders, blocking the views along the entire stretch. Now, they're on shaky ground with Hartwood.
Megan O'Leary Barrett, one zero one County Road BX, Marquette. And I'm speaking as a transplant who moved here on purpose, brought our whole family up here. And this is our third summer in Marquette. We moved here from Ohio. It's been our greatest joy, the fulfillment of a dream, and years of planning to finally be able to live full-time in the Upper Peninsula. We are not fierce opponents to progress, development, or paying off debt. However, we are fiercely protective of what has always drawn us here, this beautiful place with independent people and opportunities to embrace nature that take your breath away. We are a family of hikers, snowshoes, skiers, joggers, and bikers, and through these activities, we have rediscovered health, community, and friendships. We see people drawn together by love of an activity that transcends all differences and unites them in a passion for the outdoors. Our children are on the NTN trails as often as we can get there. Coming from a city of over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, they have had the joy of discovering more opportunities here in Marquette than they have ever had before. Through biking, they have been gifted with hours of volunteer time from adults who share their love and passion of biking. The trails are our kids' present and future. They're stomping grounds for doing hard things, becoming independent, developing friendships, making memories, and developing a connection with the place that deeply roots them to Marquette, and then they want to stay. The vision for Marquette, while of course needing to be financially promising, still needs to remain true to what keeps people here, brings them back, and draws them here in the first place. After all, NMU advertises all the way up the length of Michigan for students by claiming we are the same state, different state of mind. I think we need to remain true to the beauty and uniqueness of our Marquette. I think we need to make sure that parcel thirty-five stays as it is. I hope that developers and community members work together for a viable solution. We have so much to gain if we are progressive enough that we can boast of extensive, multipurpose trails that are integrated into the very heart of our community and developments.
My name is Matthew Ludenberger, fourteen oh six Garfield Road here in Marquette, or Avenue, sorry, Garfield Ave here in Marquette. First, I'd like to thank everybody. This is, you know, invigorating. This is great. You guys, please, I wish to hear every single one of you speak. I know we might not have time for that. I would like to reserve time on number seven, but in general, I prepared for tonight, not knowing that this was going to be such a big thing, to suggest that this is my campaign speech. Apparently, I'm on the city commission ballot, and Mike Plord and Ms. Smith are the competitors. So, anything I say, I'm limited to time. I hope you guys can have the time to respond to it. So, speaking on number seven, the Hartwood plan, the trails, this is vital. I don't know of any other resource the city of Marquette owns or has or has any sort of tie to that makes it onto covers of magazines, national and international magazines. I don't know of a single, the Ordox is probably the only thing that comes close, and that's just a symbol. The trails are what really defines a lot of what we do up here, and as many have said, it's a lot of just walking them. It's just getting out in the woods and getting away from your TVs. The trails are what really defines a lot of what we do up here. And as many have said, it's a lot of just walking them. It's just getting out in the woods and getting away from your TVs or having, like they said, the friendship, the camaraderie of having a difficult time and overcoming it with your group of peers or your family. There's a, I guess, a mem, but it might have been an advertisement, that said, "The ride is not the goal." And I want to remember that. The ride is not the goal. It's not a goal to get out there on your bikes. It's a goal just to go with friends, family. Get out and do something active. Like I said, we do this all year long. We have snow bikes. We invented the snow bikes. We should honor that. And at three million dollars, we can easily set something up where the fees for races can help pay for these deals. The, maybe we make a park pass where you can get a trolley ride to all of these different places to, I mean, going from south side to the north side trails takes a lot, and you pretty much have to have your own car. That's how many trails we have in this town. Let's honor that. This price tag that you keep complaining about for parcel thirty-five doesn't seem that expensive when you think about, we've been doing this for twenty years now. It's twenty years. We've spent more money on many other things, Lakeview Arena included, that are continual maintenance. This is just a simple, get it off our books, and let's figure out how to pay for it later. If that means NTN comes in and gives you a check and says, "Hey, we're going to figure out how to get the loan," I would hope you back them up. If that's what it takes for an RFQ to get a loan to preserve our trails, I would hope the city of Marquette can recognize everybody here and say, "This is really important to us." Thank you for your time.
My name is Gail Hannah. I live at twenty-eight thirty-eight Granite Point Drive. Honestly, I had a whole thing scripted, and I've scrapped the whole thing because other people have either said what I was going to say. Or honestly, in response to Mr. Angeli's presentation, I too am an accountant. I work for a nonprofit. I live in the world of budgets. But I also know when you're an accountant, that if you have a budget problem, you look for, that might be an easy solution. And I feel like that's what the city did, is they said, "That's labeled for potential development. Let's look at it." I spent some time today, yesterday, going back and rereading the last master plan. Every single time the Hartwood, the word Hartwood is mentioned, "Public Planning Process Requirement" is right there with it. And I have not seen any kind of public planning process. I am here because the reason I live in Marquette is, as I've thought about it the last couple of weeks, almost one-hundred percent tied to the south trails. You know, if you don't use them, I get that that might not make sense, but as I think about that, you know, I've been paying attention because those trails are so important to me. I've listened to every mention that's been made of Hartwood. And I don't remember any mention of, "Hey, we're going to do an appraisal last year. Hey, we're going to do an RFQ." I feel like the public is being brought in at the eleventh hour, and we were promised, per the master plan requirements, a public process. Thank you.
David Manson, one twenty-two West Hewitt. Hello, Board. Hello, Commission. City Manager. I'm just going to free-talk here because I don't have a set agenda, but I think we all understand that there's a pretty vocal, you know, if you have to deal with the entire community, a pretty vocal minority of people who care about the trails and the trail network. I know, you know, I personally, it's an important part of our business. I know it's an important part of attracting people to live in the community. We get, you know, numerous amount of people that come through our business telling us how great the trail network is and how they're excited to be staying downtown and have a five-minute ride to the trail network. You can't find that in many other places around the country, and that's going to just continue to grow. There's a reason they're building hotels at every corner, because we're getting people here, right? And so I guess ultimately, you have a tough job. I get that. You have to balance buzzers. You have to make decisions on behalf of the community. But understand that the community is listening and watching. We're paying attention. There may not be a lot of people here who are object to this because maybe they don't care about the trail network. We do. We all do, deeply. I'm not going to reserve any time, but, you know, we have a very sacred event where we cater in a bunch of food on Monday nights, and we ride the trails. It's brotherhood. It's activity. It's exercise. It's fun, and we support the trail network wholly. So, good luck. We'll be watching, and I'm going to go ride the trails.
My name's Wes Hannah, twenty-eight thirty-eight Granite Point Drive in Marquette, and I'm here to speak for the south trails continuing in their present, unadulterated state, as is. The south trails are quite popular and well-regarded, as we've heard here. What is it about the south trails that makes them so appealing? And I think we can look at a study performed by the University of Wisconsin entitled "Mountain Biking in the Chicananon Area of Northern Wisconsin: Implications for Regional Development." There, trail users were asked to prioritize appealing characteristics. A variety of single-track trails and a natural surroundings were the top answers, with natural surroundings topping the list with ninety-four point three percent. Natural surroundings do not include easements, two subdivisions, apartment complexes, or lodges, or commercial parking lots. The fact that the south trails offer these exact top characteristics within easy-riding distance of lodges and four-star dining options is truly amazing and unique. But what does that really mean to the city? And by the city, I mean the residents, trail users, and non-trail users. Again, if we look at the University of Wisconsin study in twenty-fourteen, "The Economic Impacts of Active Silent Sports Enthusiasts," a case study from northern Wisconsin, they found that non-residents made an average of four-point-two trips to the area annually and spent an average of two-point-four nights per trip. Bottom line is that of the twenty-six point four million dollars spent annually by non-residents, fourteen point seven million dollars went directly into the local economy. While Chicananon area trails are a larger trail area, it is a much more rural area and does not offer the urban development within a few miles of the trails like Marquette does. The south trails' potential financial upside to the city is considerable. So I would ask that the city carefully consider the long-term ramifications of any decisions to impact the south trails. They are rare natural resource that, once corrupted, are gone forever. Please don't let balancing the budget in the short term bankrupt our community's long-term future.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm a little unique here. I'm actually a frequent visitor to the Marquette area. My name is Wayland Munch. I'm from Duluth, Minnesota. And I really wanted to kind of come here as firsthand evidence. You've maybe heard several times anecdotally about the influx of visitors that come to the Marquette area to use the trails, to spend their money locally. I've been in Marquette now for three days, enjoying the outdoor resources, visiting the area. I'm actually scheduled for a business trip the next three days, and I have specifically chosen to fly out of Marquette, only so I can return next weekend and spend four more days here in your community. So this community means a lot to me as a visitor, and I truly believe that, maybe I'm one of very few non-residents here tonight, but I don't think my story is all that unique. I believe I'm speaking on behalf of countless visitors to this area who see the value in what Marquette has created. Now, secondly, I mentioned that I come from Duluth. Similar to Marquette, Marquette has gained a lot of popularity in the outdoor community. Duluth is right on that same page. And what Duluth has done in the last five years has really been the product of a strong working relationship between city government, nonprofit organizations. And it has led to not only a preserved trail network, preserved green space throughout the community, but it's also brought a new sense of life to our community. Duluth was, you know, as you know, maybe on its way to being another has-been Rust Belt city. What we've been able to accomplish in Duluth is something that is right before you here in Marquette, as far as fostering those relationships early, bringing a new sense of place to your community. You already have it here, obviously. And I would really urge you to offer the NTN a seat at your table here and continue fostering that relationship. I believe your community is right there with you, and if there are any ways you can work together, you will continue to be at the cover of those magazines. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name's Brad Newman. I'm at three thirty-nine East Art Street here in Marquette, also the Chair of the zoning Board of Appeals. So I'll put a plug in for folks in the room to put an application in to join that board. That's a rewarding line of volunteerism in the city. Also professionally, I work for Michigan State University. I'm a community and economic development educator, specialize in land use policy. And Michigan State and the Land Policy Institute at MSU has studied the topic of placemaking for over a decade now. And that work culminated a couple of years ago in development of a book called "Placemaking as an Economic Development Tool," and had the opportunity of helping to co-author this publication. And I think that title summarizes many of the comments here that people have shared tonight, in that in the new economy, which we have been moving into for decades, it is quality of life that drives economic development and sense of place that drives economic development. We kind of hypothesized a three-way model here with economic development in the new economy, where business certainly needs talent. In the new economy, it's clear that one of the most coveted resources is brains. And so business needs to be where the talented, working individuals are these days. The thing is, talent is driven and motivated by place. So given how mobile we are these days, we hear of people relocating, moving their entire family to a place like this because of quality of life. Well, what comes after that attraction of talent is more business. So I think from an economic development standpoint, I know the city gets it. I've worked with Dennis and his staff for years, and the Community Development Department understands placemaking and quality of life. So I appreciate the administrator's comments in terms of how can we leverage this property in order to maximize sense of place. So I have great confidence in the city staff here and in all the commissioners to make a decision with really placemaking as an economic development tool in mind, and I appreciate the time and dedication to this particular property. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, Mayor Angeli, and city staff for hearing us tonight. And I know you're used to looking...
Who have name and address?
Sorry, Michael Sauer, twenty-three seventy-three West Fair Avenue. You're probably used to looking a lot of people in the eyes and seeing them in this room, but you're probably not used to the temperature and the smell. So apologize about that off the bat. But thanks for taking the time on having this on the agenda tonight. I know that you serve several masters, and I'm a small business owner, and I know the budget is the ultimate master. So I know these are difficult decisions and ones that you don't take lightly. Just want to take a step back to some of the planning process that's gone into the Hartwood property. You had an advisory council that was composed of developers, of community members, of people with past planning experience, that gave a series of recommendations that went to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission built and took a lot of those recommendations and put them into the community master plan, which was updated May of last year. In that master plan, there was designated surplus parcels, there was designated deferred development, conservation, and then what we called potential development. What the master plan says is that if any of those were to change, that a community-wide planning process would take place before any development was permitted. And my confusion here is that I'm seeing something that was potential development that seems to have been switched to surplus. And maybe that's a misunderstanding on my and the community's part. But when you put an RFQ out, I realize that you're basically looking for who's out there. But it seems a little putting the cart before the horse to get a developer excited about a potential development when maybe it's not what the community wants. Parcel thirty-five is integral to the trail network on the south side of Marquette. I think you'll find that there's room for compromise on other parcels where trails and development can coexist. But it's going to be really difficult to maintain the trail network at the level where it's nationally recognized with thirty-five having potential development on it. So I just want you to consider that. I know you have some tough decisions to make, but I would really encourage you to tap the brake pedal here on this RFQ process, especially for thirty-five. Go back, look at the master plan, make sure that you're following the processes and procedures, and at least that the community is educated on how you came to this decision, and help us protect this valuable asset. These trails are an asset. It's like a soccer field, a baseball field, any of the recreational opportunities, the bike path. Other communities, Munising, Duluth, they're doing what the city of Marquette did. They saw what we're doing. They're buying land and building trails. So you've got a great opportunity here to continue to lead the way on placemaking and making Marquette a great place to live. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the Commission?
Matt Calcutera, five oh five Lakeshore Boulevard. I own a business in town that happens to benefit off of these trails quite a bit. I didn't prepare to speak tonight. I can't speak anywhere near as well as a lot of people have spoken before, but parcel thirty-five, I think we should call that what that is. It's really Mount Marquette. That's the bottom apron of Mount Marquette. That's like selling off a piece of Prescott Isle or a piece of Sugarloaf. We shouldn't touch that. The trail itself is one thing that we all love to hike or bike on, but I think it was Lori that said, she's talking about the trail experience. The trail experience is bigger than the trail itself. Mount Marquette area is so close to town, we can jump on our bikes or walk or hike or even ski to it right from our homes, and we can feel like we're way out in the woods. That's the experience that we want.
Nicholas Dobbs, three twenty-two West Crescent. I'm in a unique situation, working in the bicycle industry. Been here in Marquette since two thousand and six, and was able actually to get a job with the largest bicycle company in the world. I travel to about nineteen states throughout the year, and I go to roughly four to five different trailheads and major biking communities each week. I've seen a very special thing grow here, and, you know, people that have never heard of Marquette, or sorry, have never been to Marquette, they've heard of Marquette, they've heard of kind of this expanse that we have, and this unique kind of trail system where you can be in the city but out of the city, you know, in a different element, in a different area, feeling like you really are out there. That's something that I don't see in a lot of areas. I go to Minneapolis, for instance, lots of trails in Minneapolis, but you're on small plots of land, you're zigzagging around, you know, you're seeing houses, you're seeing lots of people, you're hearing cars by you. These are experiences that we don't have to have in Marquette, and it's a very unique thing that I think we should, you know, really consider keeping around for everybody in the future. Thank you.
Anyone else? Would anyone else care to address the Commission at this time? Seeing none, we're going to close this portion of public comment. We're going to move to presentations. We have three tonight. First presentation is the introduction and oath of Patrolman Jeffrey Zarny and Patrolman Tyson Ferrari by Chief of Police Blake Rybolt. Blake, we're going to do it at the side podium.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, fellow commissioners. I'm honored to be here tonight representing the men and women of the Marquette City Police Department and welcoming and swearing in the two newest members of our team, Officer Jeff Zarny and Officer Tyson Ferrari. Officer Zarny comes to us from Chalkley Township Police Department, where he worked as a patrol officer for the past year and a half. He also worked for the NMU Public Safety, assigned to the hospital detail. I'd also like to welcome Officer Tyson Ferrari, who comes to us from the Forsyth Township Police Department, where he worked for one year as a patrol officer, and also worked part-time prior to that at Chalkley Township and NMU Public Safety. Clerk Chris Hazaras is going to do the swearing-in, and then I'd like everybody to welcome him after.
Aye, Tyson Ferrari.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Marquette.
And the Charter of the City of Marquette.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of the Office of Patrolman for the City of Marquette.
Of the Office of Patrolman for the City of Marquette.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Welcome. If I could get a signature, please.
Just want to congratulate you and welcome you to the city. Thank you for your duty.
Aye, Jeffrey Zarny Jr.
Aye, Jeffrey Zarny Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Marquette.
And the Charter of the City of Marquette.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office...
Of Patrolman for the City of Marquette.
Patrolman for the City of Marquette.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take one and give the chief the other.
Chief, thank you.
Okay, our second presentation of the evening is "Redevelopment Ready Communities" by Senior RRC Planner Christopher Germain. Christopher, you're here.
So, good evening, everyone, mayor, commission, city staff. Hi, especially Dennis. Thanks for all your help with this so far. So, my name is Christopher Germain. I'm a senior planner with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, specifically the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program. I am also an NMU alum, so I am really excited to actually be back up here. And like many of you in the audience, I hope maybe some year down the road I become another resident again. That'd be fantastic, so... But I want to talk to you tonight about the RRC program in specific. So, about a year ago, the city entered RRC, which, as I mentioned before, stands for Redevelopment Ready Communities. Essentially, it's a free technical assistance program offered through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, which really seeks to empower communities to do locally-driven development, something that obviously is really near and dear to the hearts of Marquette based on all the comments we just heard tonight. Program operates by providing a free technical audit, which is something a lot of communities would pay some pretty significant dollars for, but we see as a state the benefit in helping our communities get their plans in place, their zoning codes, their development review processes, and all those things in place, so that when development comes to town, when you feel these development pressures, you know what your vision is. You know what you want your communities to be. You have the frameworks in place to push those visions forward. So, essentially, it operates under the idea that planning and economic development go hand in hand, right? Well-planned communities are attractive not only to residents but to investors, and you have to balance those demands, the supply and demand, the real estate markets, all those types of things. So, RRC prepares you to do that. Ultimately, you see this talent placement cycle thing up here. Brad actually mentioned this earlier in his comments. This guides everything MEDC does. So, we really believe, again, that this idea, people choose when they want to live now. I mean, it's not just folks my age, it's folks of all ages, as again you heard multiple people say here tonight. So, creating that type of community creates that type of investment, creates that demand for talent, and it goes full cycle. But ultimately, RRC is a certification program, so there is an end goal in mind through RRC. I will tell you, there are 233 communities in the program as of this morning. There is one certified in the UP, that's Escanaba currently. There's another 23 downstate, which puts Marquette in a really great situation to potentially be, again, one of those first couple in the UP to be certified, which really create, again, better framework for development moving forward. So, there are six best practices in the program, kind of ranging from community plans and public outreach, which again are obviously things that are already clearly in place here in Marquette, all the way down to training of your boards and commissions, identifying priority redevelopment sites, and what we call community prosperity, which is really kind of a catch-all. So, economic development strategies, marketing, websites, those types of things that really kind of put that pretty bow on your redevelopment readiness. So, essentially, over the last couple of months, the city of Marquette has undergone what we call a formal evaluation. So, you have the baseline report in your pocket. It goes much more into detail than I'm going to tonight, but we compare what the city is doing now against those six best practices, which are broken down into 41 criteria. We found is alignment with 55% of the criteria. It's pretty darn good, to be totally honest with you. So, normally, we see around 20, maybe 30% in some of our better communities, so to see 55% is great. What that also means is there's 45% of areas where there's still some area for improvement. And so, what I want to do real quick is just highlight some of the good and the areas we need some improvement, and kind of talk about what comes next in terms of trying to get the city over the finish line to full alignment with those best practices. So, what's already strong, I don't think I really need to say a whole lot on this first one right now. So, clearly, the things are in place. You know, the fact, I know there's a lot of, you know, concern and questions about what an RFQ is. Really, in terms of public participation, RFQ is the best way to go in terms of if you know you have a potentially controversial site, you're going to create the longest process possible to give people that public engagement opportunity to do that additional planning and to answer their questions. A lot of communities jump straight to RFPs. They just move straightforward into actually that proposal that then people then have to react to, versus actually being able to share their opinions and make sure they're crafting that proposal before a developer even ever sets hands on it. So, kudos to you on public participation. Your zoning code is also very strong, your waterfront codes, a number of your other codes are very well done. The Unified Land Development Code, which is currently under, being created, is going to be a huge step in the right direction as well. It adds a lot of new provisions to it, including better green infrastructure standards, more housing diversity. And in other areas, they're going to really create that sustainable development for you going forward. Development Review Process, another area where you scored really well. And this one was really interesting to us, because normally what we get are developers who really dislike working with the city, we call them about, or they just really love them, and you just, you got to question why they really love them so much. We got that real nice balance here in Marquette. We got developers who were like, yeah, they have high standards, they ask for a lot, but they're open about it, they're honest about it, we know what we're getting into when we go forward, and a lot of your developers are locally grown, which is really a great situation to be in. You are absolutely feeling some out-of-town development pressure, I think we all know that, but you're putting the right frameworks in place to make sure that pressure is checked and balanced going forward. And then Priority Redevelopment Sites, this is one a lot of communities struggle with, so I definitely want to highlight that you're working to identify those. It sounds like we might need to backtrack a little bit or maybe take another look at some of those priority sites, but you've identified them, you're having those conversations, which is what's really important in terms of development, making sure that you are driving development to the areas where you want to see it, or maybe where you think you want to see it, and then you could change your mind. But again, you're doing it all early, right, so that you're getting those conversations out there. Some areas where there's opportunities for growth, and you can access our technical assistance to actually kind of complete that pie for RRC, your plans. So, you have a great master plan, it's really well done overall. There are some small things in there, some small tweaks we'd recommend, not in terms of content, but in terms of the way it's drafted and it's structured. The biggest one we look for is you have a whole list of task items and timelines, but you have no one assigned to actually achieve any of those things. There's no responsible parties, no city departments, no outside partners, none of that. So, I think it's implied what those people are going to work on, but again, when you have staff turnover and people turnover, you kind of forget who you were planning to work on that action item. So, we look to have those actually written down when you do the master plan. Training. The city supports training really well across your boards and commissions, but it's really informal, it's very flexible. Again, it has a lot to do with the fact you have strong city staff currently in place. If that turns over, you could see some planning commissions or other boards and commissions that start to go down in terms of the training level. That doesn't bode well for anybody, right? If you're going to be a planning commissioner, or EBA member, Brownfields, or DDA, or any of those boards, you need to know what you're talking about. You need to know, you know, what your rights and responsibilities are, you know, what the trends you're going to be dealing with are. So, we've made some recommendations in this report for better ways to just formalize that system a little bit, to make sure you're getting the information and the knowledge that you need to push development forward in the correct direction. Economic Development Strategy. So, you have a 2016 draft strategy, which hasn't been formally adopted. RRC certification requires a formally adopted economic development strategy, so whether it's this one that you've drafted, or whether it's a different one, the city should go back and take a look at that and decide how you want your development strategy to move forward, into formally adopting economic development strategy. And tied to that, Marketing. We heard a lot of stories again tonight about folks who clearly know why they want to come to Marquette. We know what puts Marquette on the map. I know why I love Marquette and always try to get up here as much as I possibly can, but you have a lot of people telling that story. And they're telling that story in very different ways, and they're not necessarily using the same messaging, and they're overlapping audiences, and all this type of stuff. So, I encourage you to use the RRC process to bring those folks together and do a unified marketing strategy throughout the entire city. You're going to have different messages, and people are going to tackle different audiences, but making sure that you kind of know who's doing what, and who's responsible for doing those pieces is going to make that marketing even stronger. It's going to get your story out even better, so. So, that's a really high-level overview of what's in that report. So, in terms of moving forward for RRC, what we ask now is that you take a look at the report, you read through it over the next couple of weeks. At your next meeting or the meeting after that, if you've decided that you would like to continue pursuing certification, we ask that you pass another resolution and intend to continue with the program. It's really similar to what you passed about a year ago. At the same time, this is your out. So, if you decide you disagree with the report and you want to leave, you can take the report and the audit and all the resources, no hard feelings, and you can kind of go your own way, but hopefully, you want to do it. Once you do that, though, we'll continue to be with you all the way. We have all sorts of technical resources, we have matching technical assistance dollars, we can connect you with other neighbors, to really kind of push you forward and tackle that 45% that you weren't quite there, and give you all the resources to actually get you all the way there. Once you get there, you become certified, so you would join the ranks of Escanaba, like I said, and 23 other communities across the state, which opens up its own toolbox of options, more development programs, more technical assistance, renderings, redevelopment services teams, trainings, conferences, all sorts of things, again, add value to community to create that locally-driven economic development that you're looking for. So, just a couple of last-minute thoughts for you. RRC cannot be done on its own. Dennis, I believe is superhuman, but I don't think that he can actually do it all on his own, despite how he may try. So, you need to be looking at everyone else in the city, you need to be looking at your external partners, making sure that they're at the table. You know, you should be looking at Invest UP, you should be looking at Lake Superior Partnership, you should be looking at all those folks and say, what can you do to help us get over this finish line? There's a couple of ideas up here on this slide, obviously, of folks. I'm sure that's not exhaustive at all, but definitely something to keep in mind. And then the last thing I just really want to talk about real quick is just why do it, right? So, we just stuck a 20-page report in front of you, and we're like, do all these things and get our certification. There is a lot of value in going through this. Really, the true value is the intrinsic value, right, of going through this, getting your house in order, and making sure that you're staying competitive, but you're staying competitive in a way that, again, allows you to sit in the driver's seat of economic developments. You know, you know, again, what your community wants, what the vision wants. RRC can get you there. It's another marketing tool, it's a good housekeeping seal of approval, and it's just kind of getting all those ducks in a row. And then there's also, of course, you know, the tangible benefits of it, that matching technical assistance dollars, the pre-development services fund, and all sorts of other opportunities that provide tools, really, to create economic development, again, in the way that your community would like to see, the projects that you want to see. I think, you know, one of the most important things about MEDC and the work that we do is we don't support projects that don't have clear community support. So, if a developer comes to us, our first question is, have you talked to the city? Do you know what they want? Are you aligned with their vision and their goals? RRC allows you to like kind of take that to the next level, and to really sort of drive that forward. So, with that, I know I kind of blasted through that real quick, because you have a lot of things on the agenda tonight. I kind of want to go for a bike ride after all these public comments, so... But do you have any questions that I can answer while I'm here?
Commissioners, anyone? Mr. Schlegel?
Thanks, Christopher. That was some really awesome information. You know, after my time on the Planning Commission, and seeing how hard staff works for the community, and the time and commitment that's volunteered by the people that sit on the board itself, it's exciting to see that they're in as good a shape as they are, according to your standards. That's really exciting. And I can tell you that they bust their butts doing it, and I'm really, really proud of them for that, and quite a feather in your hat, Dennis, to be able to put this together the way that it is. I'm proud of you, man. At the same time, just to see these couple of suggestions that you came up with, they make a lot of sense. Went through the whole business plan, or I'm sorry, the master plan revision and a lot of the other things while I was on that, and these are some good points. Brad, I've been through a couple of his classes that he taught through the MSU Extension, and they're very valuable, especially when you're kind of green on the committees, but I just, I think that this is just a really nice presentation, and I'm really excited to see that this is an opportunity that we can look into a little bit further and hopefully, I think, continue with.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Christopher, yes, the information you gave us, the presentation tonight, was very meaningful. I think it's good for the city of Marquette, and I think we'll definitely be looking at this, so I do thank you very much.
Of course.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Of course, thank you, and I encourage you to use our services, so I have another excuse to come up here, please. So, thank you very much, guys.
Okay, our third... Our third presentation of the evening is on the Election Board. City Clerk Chris Hazaras will give that to us, please.
A little bit shorter than everybody else. This will be a very short presentation. This is the annual Election Board presentation out of our boards and committees for the city. Our Election Board members listed here, Barb Hein, Margaret Schwalm, Suman Honek, Linda Rowe, myself, I'm the chair of the board as the clerk. My deputy who updated this presentation didn't even list himself as deputy, but he is the liaison, so I wanted to point that out. We are authorized by Charter and State of Michigan Election Code. We have set schedule every year. We have a requirement to certify election equipment, make sure everything's in order, and that's basically what the Election Board reviews each year. Last year, 2017, we received some new equipment. I think if anybody has voted in the precinct, you noticed that the equipment looked a little bit different, and it was a little bit slower. We did receive Help America Vote Act monies and State of Michigan monies for this equipment, so nothing really came out of the city's pocket. This year, because of the new equipment, we're going to be switching things up a little bit, so instead of processing our applications or AV ballots in the precinct, we're going to convert to accounting board, and that's something that the... and that's something that the city election board has to approve. So on July 5th, we're going to ask them to review it and approve accounting board for us. An accounting board is basically two separate precincts that processes the absentee ballots in the same way you would in the precinct if you were actually going to vote, but it won't tie up the machines because they're slower. So we're going to be doing a little bit different this year, hopefully, and we'll bring that back to you next year and give you a report on how that went. Our upcoming meetings, basically, we appoint election inspectors for, in July, for the August meeting. We conduct an accuracy test of all the city's election equipment. And then, right back to September, we appoint election inspectors again for November and conduct the accuracy test of the election equipment. Most, everything this board does is by election law, so we don't deviate a whole lot. We have a real good group. They have a lot of input. We've had some connection with the League of Woman Voters, and we're hoping that that comes back up. I don't know what happened there. Mine's still showing. So basically, that's it. In a nutshell, we're mandated by state. There we go. Thank you. And if you have questions, that's the end of my presentation. Very short and sweet and good. There we came up, questions.
Commissioners, any questions? We have a full board, right?
We do.
Do you have turnover?
Not very much, no.
You're fortunate.
We're very fortunate. I recruit a lot. But we have some really good members. They ask great questions. They do great follow-ups, so I'm very happy to have them.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Chris. Okay, next we come to the consent agenda. Commissioners, you have it in front of you. Do you have a motion? Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Second. Commissioner Plourd?
I second.
Contains a resolution, so we need a roll call votes. City Clerk, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Plourd?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes, that carries six zero. Okay, next we move to new business. We have four items on new business. First item that we're going to go with is the Marquette Downtown District Identity Enhancement Project Steering Committee. City Clerk, could we have the background on that, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Background. The Marquette Downtown Development Authority Board recently hired the national firm Arnett Muldoon and Associates to conduct a branding and marketing initiative for the downtown district. The goal is to create a consistent strategy to continue to build local pride, Marquette's downtown district to both visitors and locals, support local businesses, and attract new investment. The outcome shall strengthen both physical and intangible characteristics, identify business development and marketing opportunities, and create a cohesive downtown experience. The project approach will include involvement by downtown businesses, stakeholders, and the public. The process includes establishment of a steering committee to work with and provide general guidance to the consultant. The steering committee will be comprised of representatives of key partner organizations that have a large impact on the downtown district and who have a stake in a healthy and vital downtown. The DDA would like to respectfully request a member of the city commission be appointed to participate as a member of the steering committee for the project. The kickoff for the process and the initial consultant site visit is June nineteenth to twenty-first. Fiscal effect none. Recommendation: appoint a city commissioner to participate on the steering committee for the Marquette Downtown District Identity Enhancement Project. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Do you have a motion, Commissioner Smith?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Mike Plor, Commissioner Plor, as the city commissioner to participate on the steering committee for the Marquette Downtown District Identity Enhancement Project.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Before we have comment, it is possible, if someone else wants to volunteer, to say so, or if you want, you know, make a motion for someone else, just say so. We are very happy to have Commissioner Plor do this, so... But it's open. It's up for grabs. Commissioner Smith, do we have any comments?
Just that I'd like to thank Commissioner Plor for stepping up in that role.
Commissioner Frazier?
Commissioner Plor did a great job with this.
Any other comments? We are very happy to have Commissioner Plor step up. Okay, see no further comments. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Oh, that carries six zero. Okay, next. Come for a discussion on the Hartwood Forest land property. This will be a discussion amongst the commission members. We don't need a motion. Here to discuss. We don't want to go over and over and over. Let's try to keep it at the high points.
Your honor?
Yes.
Some people reserve time to speak.
Okay, you are correct. The first is Mr. Kerry Gottlieb?
I don't know if I have to reintroduce myself. Kerry Gottlieb, 1076 South Lake Street. I spoke earlier, and I'd like to reiterate a small portion of what I said earlier. As I can speak a bit slower, I have less to say, and I know there have been many impassioned speakers between what I said before and now. And the NTN board's position may have gotten lost in that. NTN had a three-and-a-half-hour board meeting last week. I'm president of NTN. And I'd like to discuss specifically what our official position is. This is what we agreed on. NTN would prefer that parcel thirty-five, given its centrality to the south trails, be removed from the RFQ process so that we can work with the city to develop a plan that would harmonize the needs of the city and the community. Should that fail, we would hope that purchase of thirty-five by NTN would be considered as the primary option for the property. And then, should those options fail, we would ask that the city ask developers to collaborate with the NTN to preserve what you, the commission or previous commissions, I imagine, have allowed to happen with the purchase of the Hartwood. We would also suggest that the city secure trail easements through all the Hartwood and ask that developers work with the NTN to maintain the trails, including those on parcels nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, which have active RFQ solicitations. If existing trails can't be maintained on those parcels because of development needs, then trail replacement and relocation be part of any RFP accepted or considered and accepted. Lastly, I would like to emphasize again that NTN has met with one developer interested in parcels nine through twelve. That developer has committed to retaining trails throughout them. Should they be the selected developer, should that RFQ be accepted, then proceed to an RFP. We'd gladly meet with anybody else that you guys deem appropriate through the RFQ process, and actually look forward to working with the developers. I would happily entertain any questions as president of NTN. I'll be sitting in back. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Peter Centi?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, commissioners, for being here and serving our community. Thank you for your patience and all the work that you do, Mr. Angeli. I guess as a physician of forty years in the healthcare field, I'd like to address something that hasn't really been talked about much tonight, and that is the benefits to our local citizenry of being out in nature. And also address the dichotomy. It's not just about bikers. I'll admit that us bikers are passionate, and we're the ones to build the trails, but we don't feel that we have any special right to the trails. It's for non-motorized traffic. You know, it's not just about bikers. It's about everybody in the community that wants to get out in nature and get some fresh air. Regarding the health of the community, my feeling is you can take a pill or take the trail. You got high cholesterol? High blood sugar, high blood pressure? I had a patient once. He had these things. I said, "My friend, I can put you on a cholesterol pill. I can put you on a blood pressure pill. I can put you on a diabetes pill, or you can get out and do your activity, maybe take off a few pounds in the process, and not have to take a pill." He came back five years later and thanked me. He was on no pills. So I believe an important concept that we have to address here is the wellness of our community. Our parents, our peers, and our children. And the more access that we have to these trails, I feel the healthier we'll be of a community. Yes, we're poised for climate refugees in Marquette, Michigan. That's inevitable. It's going to happen. But perhaps our first allegiance is to our neighbors and our communities, and so I would just like to encourage you to take that into consideration. Not only for your cholesterol, your blood sugar, your blood pressure, your weight, also for your mental health issues, your depression, your anxiety, your insomnia. It was real touching to me. I saw a young couple, and this woman was, like, out to here. And I joked about maybe light beer, but of course she was turned pregnant and would deliver, and they were walking on the trails. It was real touching to me that, like, two months later, I saw them walking out there with their kid. It's a family thing. And the more families that spend time out there, the better. You got the nine oh six cycling team that has a hundred kids in the program, and we're trying to build a healthier community via trails. A few, I'm involved with Start the Cycle. Each year, we get a couple dozen high-risk kids from the court system, social service system, doctor's offices. A couple of years ago, I had a fourteen-year-old girl for breaking and entering. She quit at one time during the season. We persevered, and she crossed the finish line on the twentieth mile or to shore, and she's still involved in the program.
Dr. Centi, your time is up.
Five seconds. I had a sixteen-year-old kid that I'm working with right now. He shot himself in the chest two and a half months ago. He's in the program. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Veridol?
Frank Veridol, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. Again, we have no cover sheet for an item that warrants one. What aspect of Hartwood were we to discuss? The members who meet with the manager to assemble our agendas have not responded to the problems we've had receiving obviously needed information and depictions in our packets. A May thirty-first article states, "The city is seeking requests for qualifications from developers interested in Hartwood property. Parcel thirty-five is vacant, heavily tree-covered forest land," end quote. Tree-covered sure doesn't sound vacant to me. May twenty-ninth, the manager disappointingly said, "Just to point out, there was a public planning process that was approved by the commission in 2010. He now seeks to develop some of the property that was depicted in red at that time." This is another case of the public being told only the side of the picture that officials want us to hear. The original news release read, "The commission voted March seventeen, two thousand and five, to purchase two thousand three hundred seventy-three acres of undeveloped property from the Hartwood Forest Land Fund for five million dollars. It will allow the city to foster permanent environmental stewardship on the most precious and fragile parts of the property while allowing recreational trails to be maintained and expanded. It further states the opportunity for the future sale and development of up to three hundred fifty-six acres. Check it yourselves." Then an ad hoc committee was loaded with pro-development members, including our area's two biggest developers. Their influence spread to a hand-picked pro-development planning commission. Both groups operated under this board. The consequence of this sickness in government is clearly depicted on the red and green map. All the times I've mentioned this news release, and this board carries on as if it were never said. Don't give us the power plant is closing, and we need tax revenue business. We've had years of advance notice to work toward a resolution without compromising our once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Of the three hundred fifty-six developable acres, one hundred were sold to the landfill, seventy of which were approved under protest because only thirty acres were needed for the landfill's long-term needs. The other seventy are subject to logging. Those members exhibited extreme carelessness. How did the proposed compromise of our green space come about surreptitiously with a loaded ad hoc committee? This should be investigated. Examine the map to visualize...
Mr.? That is correct. Mr. Veridol, please do not refer to it that way.
They examined the map to visualize how severely the encroachment would cramp our space as trail use increases each year. Too many cities have seen their once-huge parks inundated with heavy use. Let us stick with the vision that led us to purchase this property to fulfill the long-term needs of a larger Marquette. Sadly, Hartwood has fallen into the hands of an entity that has proven its inability to handle that land. Those areas in red are illegitimate. It's time we stand up for what's ours or they'll steal too much from us and from generations to come. Of course, they're still free to sell up to two hundred fifty-six more acres.
Mr. Ludenberger?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Matt Ludenberger, fourteen oh six Garfield Ave, here in Marquette. I, like I said earlier briefly, I'm running for city commission, one of the two seats here. So in essence, I will tell you how I would vote in this. I would try to preserve the NTN vision of that parcel. They have a great system. Their board works out these problems very confidently, and I don't know of any other big words, but anyways. They do this really well. They do it for our community. They don't do it for themselves. And in that sense, this seems more of a reward, if you could, to somehow refuse the sale or refuse the RFQ for at least parcel thirty-five. And like NTN says, they have a developer for some of the other ones. So consider everything that you've heard here. I have not heard one person from the developers come up and speak in favor of an RFQ for this property. That should, I mean, that should just speak volumes alone, on its own. If somebody is interested, if there is somebody out there that would respond to the RFQ that is different than NTN, please, I would have rather seen them here and spend some time with us. I haven't seen any. Please consider that it is all city residents who are trying to reserve something the city technically owns. So in essence, we as city residents own this property just as much as the seven of you do. So if there's anything about numbers and anything about the amount of people who disagree with what you're going to go forward with or what you have to choose on tonight, and those who do agree, I have yet to hear an agreement for developing this property, except for from the background of we're losing money. And like I said, there's always a way to make money. If you really wish, a park pass trolley that we could take trail riders from one place to another and go around town, maybe twenty-five cents a ride, that all goes to the NTN purchase agreement. Again, I want this off the debt roll as much as possible. And I've been working on a number of other things where I understand where large numbers can be intimidating. But this isn't a large number, not for the value that we have. I would say a million dollars per magazine cover is a starting point. I would say three million dollars of value per magazine cover is probably a good average point. We have that many people come in for simple bike races. They sound simple, but there's a lot of training. There's a lot of things that go involved. There's a lot of volunteers that make it happen every single year. Please consider putting the brakes on, as somebody said, please consider refusing the RFQ process this evening. But Mr. Plor and Ms. Smith, if you do vote for this and you do go forward with the RFQ that it does not include NTN, I'm sorry, but that's a campaign issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are the four speakers that I believe have signed up. Have I missed anyone? You have four? Okay, so we're done with speakers. Again, it's back to the commission. Anybody got any comments? Commissioner Reynolds?
I'll start. All right, here we are. Do you guys know how hard it is to stay quiet up here when you have all these people talk to you about the Hartwood Forest and you have feelings, too? It's really, really hard. I'm just, that's what I'm going to first say. I've listened to everything that everybody's said. I appreciate all the emails that we've received. Actually, I don't think I have a single one left. Oh, wait, there's one left. I have seven friends, I counted in this audience of people, and I think a lot of those people would tell you that they respect me and what I do, and that I would look at this stuff very carefully. and that I would look at this stuff very carefully. To Mr. Sower's comment, I also didn't know that this was considered surplus land. So it was news to me when I got my first email about this. So continuing on that. Wow, I have so many notes on here. I apologize if I'm all over. Number one, that was the loudest pledge I've ever heard in five years of being a city commissioner, 'cause that many people in this room. This kind of stuff makes me super emotional when I have this many people come forward and care this much about something in our community. And that's when I tend to have a hard time speaking publicly 'cause I see all how much you guys love this place. With that, I think that we'd all hate to see, every single one of us commissioners, see anything happen to harm what we have here in Marquette with those NTN trails. I've spoken to people on the phone. I've answered all the emails. But I think we also are very scared of losing possible life-or-death services. And we have to take the right approach to this. I think it's important, as the city manager said, we have to listen to all residents. We do, I have had some phone calls from older people wondering a couple of years ago, "Why aren't we moving on Hartwood? Why aren't we doing some of these things?" And then with all of that being said, I wanna make sure that we're all partners together. We do this right. And I don't think that I would have the support necessarily for this, but I, as a commissioner, would be okay with taking Parcel 35 off the table. I did tell this to the city manager. And I do believe, last week when I talked to him, the reason that it isn't an agenda item like other items is 'cause I said I was gonna add it on my own otherwise. So with that, oh, I do have one question to Dennis. It keeps getting really, really confusing with these steps, processes. Like for the public to know what happens after the next, 'cause the city manager talked about it with the RFQ process, but what happens next? Then what happens? Then what happens if we accepted something?
So you're looking for the "from this point forward" scenario? Okay. We will hopefully receive some responses to our request for qualifications. Once they get through the vetting process, which is essentially myself and the city manager and others who we, and Gary Simpson, may help us with that on the financial aspect of things. And generally, a city attorney is involved. That's kind of like our management team for high-level things. And the city will look at those. And we'll do a sniff test. And we'll meet with those folks if they are, if there are any that pass muster. And we want to hear from them and get a feel for them. And then we would begin crafting a request for proposals for the property. But it will only go to those people that qualified through the RFQ process. I think the city manager, myself, and other members of the management team of, even though we can't read minds and palms, we can definitely judge the temperature of a, of a community. So we have an idea of what the RFP is going to look like if there's some qualified developers. We put that out for proposals. Then that really kicks in the real estate process for the city of Marquette, which is governed by ordinance. And again, the city commission, at any time during that process, up to including the final vote to sell property, can decide not to do it. So I think there are plenty of checks and balances in place to be able to allow us to cut bait or leave it on and hopefully reel in something that, that becomes really total quality. As far as timeline, that could, you know, we're looking at at least, gosh, four, five, six months before we even get to that point. The request for qualifications is the first step. That's June 15th. That takes us into July. By the time we draft proposals, because we're government and we suck at doing things. I'm joking, right? I'm trying to loosen up the room, okay? That, that generally is gonna bring us into the fall. Time to get proposals, winter time. And this, this could go on for quite some time. So we've got plenty of time to massage things and work it out. You concur, city manager?
Well, except the suck part. No, I wanna add one thing, and I haven't figured it all out yet. But it's always been my plan, or my thoughts, to include at least some of the leadership from NTN in this process somewhere. I haven't figured that out yet. The RFQs basically will give us the qualifications. And to be totally honest with everybody here, I'm, I'm familiar with two proposals so far. One potential and one real that the NTN might be perfectly fine with. And I'd like to have them in my corner when we get to a decision on how we move forward with this property. And I'll continue to be honest and say that I would like NPN to help me, not be a roadblock for me. In other words, I'd like to bring you in, sit down, and establish our goals and say, "Here, help me get here or help me get there. Let's get there together," not just someone to throw out roadblocks for me along the way. I don't think I'm gonna get that. But it's kind of unusual, I think, circumstance when we're talking about selling a piece of property and we, and we bring the, an outside group like that in to help us with the process. But it's pretty obvious to me that if I'm gonna get this done, they're gonna have to like it. So I mean, if we get there, we get there. If we don't, we don't.
Commissioner Smith?
So I had the opportunity on Saturday to take a nearly three-hour tour on the south trails with NTN Director Lori Houseworth, Commissioner Schlegel, and a couple of concerned individuals. I appreciate all the public comments tonight, and I've received numerous emails. I can tell you that I am listening. I'm sure you're aware that this is a big job. It's not easy to balance all the priorities, goals, budget, everything that's going on at the city. I can tell you, I'm definitely open to hearing more from the NTN and how we can work together. I haven't made any decisions in my own mind yet about what should happen, how we should proceed. But my main takeaway from the three hours, or nearly three hours, that spent on Saturday, was that the NTN and the city of Marquette really need to work more closely together. And however that may look, I support that. That's where I'm at.
Commissioner Frazier?
I'd say I'll support it. It's great. I have a lot of friends that use the trails. My family and I use trails once in a while, not all the time. We're, everybody in this board is an outdoor person. We get comments all the time saying we're not outdoors. We don't enjoy the outdoors. We all do, you know. Commissioner, she just said she was hiking the trails. So it was like, everybody's been out trails. I mean, not every trail you go on is the same trail we go. We all go, and I'm enjoying the boating community too. And unfortunately, everybody enjoys everything outdoors differently. Everybody gets their own thing to do, and they think it's the most important thing in the world. It's basically, say, Lake Arena. Lake Arena's got their own people. They got people from the hockey teams. Everybody wants to use the arena, pays for it. You know, maybe NTN could work out a thing where they could buy their property and charge people, like it's like the ski hill. They charge like 15, 20 bucks to ski. And maybe something like that would happen for, maybe, you know, five bucks or something like that to rent a trail. Who knows? Some, you guys are unique people. You could figure out something. And I don't wanna come to where, like Mike said, the tax bill's going down. I wanna come to, okay, we have to raise taxes because we can't afford, because, you know, taxes are up. Why are we raising our taxes? I pay a lot of taxes, and so a lot of people pay taxes. Some people don't pay taxes. There's rent property that like to, you know, tell the city what to do to this rent property, which goes towards somebody else paying the taxes, which is fine. But it's just a matter of, and just 'cause the property, I figured, I tell people, just 'cause the property is for sale, like Dennis said, doesn't mean anything's gonna happen right away. I mean, founders landing, got developed a little bit, and then the rest has been for sale for a long time. It's not a property in the city that's been under, for sale and never been developed. There's a time last year when some area was for sale and qualifications were met, everything's were met, came to our position. We didn't like their ideas. So we shut it down and said, "Sorry, we're not gonna accept your proposal." Simple as that. We could do the same thing with this. If somebody comes in and said, "I wanna build, you know, a three-story condo in the woods. It'll make a great place for all the bakers today." We'll say, "No, we don't like the idea." You know, all these, you know, and like Mike said, all developers are different. And we wanna work closer with NTN and say, "Any developer that's interested, work with the planning commission, work with NTN, work with Mike. Find the best process." And then they'll come to us with, you know, ask the public comment. So come in front of the public. Some developer make the little spiel saying, "Okay, I wanna do this, this, and this." And we'll vote on it. If we accept everybody saying, "Okay, we don't like this. We don't like what this person's saying. We don't like this development." We'll agree to disagree. I mean, we'll all say, "No, that's not, that's not a good idea." I mean, everything's, there's been plans, I mean, back in the day, I'm a big boater. I know the Ordeck is a big monument to the city. There were plans to build condos years ago. Thank God it didn't go through, 'cause that was, qualifications were accepted. But the commission shut it down. I mean, it's just 'cause properties fail doesn't mean anything's gonna, like Mike said. Like Dennis said, just 'cause qualifications are met doesn't mean anything's gonna happen. I mean, we're talking, even if somebody came up with a check, gave Mike a check for, you know, a couple million bucks, all of a sudden, the property's for sale, doesn't mean it's gonna be, they're talking like at least a couple of years of process, all the paperwork, and then at least a year of planning to try and figure out how to do everything right, you know. So I think everything's, we listen to everybody. We accept everybody's comments, and we will work our best to make sure everything's right.
Thank you. Mr. Schlegel?
So great day out there, Saturday on the trails. It was, it was beautiful. Big fan. Plain and simple, this is a process that, for years, has been kinda put, pushed back deeper on the shelf because nobody wanted to be the ones to step in this pile. And, and it's time now to start dealing with this. And I really think that I have faith in our, our local authorities here. Mr. Angelis is doing a fabulous job. And I really have a feeling that this is gonna work out truly for the best, for the community, that the bikers, the hikers, and, and the city of Marquette. Big believer in karma and, but I guess the big thing for me here is, is that we have to consider everybody's opinions. Great job showing up tonight. We love to see people show up. Great conversation, amazing ideas. Thank you so much. It's been, it's been almost overwhelming answering a lot of the correspondence that's been coming our way. And my wife is getting a little bit tired of me having to do that. So settle it down a little bit. We all understand what this brings to the community. We want to continue to see this grow in a way that's going to benefit for years to come. There has to be some responsible development that's gonna go on with this in some way, shape, and form. You know, I'm not gonna make any promises on anything as far as one parcel over the other right now because it's really early. But believe me that we are working, we're gonna work our butts off for you to make sure that the absolute best possible option can come from this. And then we'll, we'll throw it out there, and hopefully it sticks. Let's put it that way. But I think that this is a very good opportunity for both sides, number one, to work with, with the NTN and all of their smaller, I don't know how it all works. I know you've got a bunch of different organizations or groups, whether it be snow biking, summer single track, the different north and south trails, all that stuff. I'd love to see you guys go into the, to the north trails past by House. I think it's Tuesday nights when the, when the train goes by and there's 50 or 60 people heading out that way. It's great to see it utilized. But at the same time, we just need to make sure that, that we're taking everybody's thoughts and considerations and concerns into consideration with this thing. And I think that the NTN can, can pool their resources. I know they've got a board. I don't, I'm not gonna make any kind of assumptions, but I know that this process is gonna make you guys stronger because it's gonna force you to maybe get past some things that may not be as smooth as you want them to be or, or be a better part of the community and being a more vocal part of the community. Whatever it's gonna be, there's lots of opportunities here that NTN is gonna come out smelling like the roses that they deserve to smell like because of all the work they've put in. Those trails are fabulous. They, they really are something to behold. And I think that there's a number of people, Mr. Burnett, that's been out there digging for centuries, it seems. He should be a mole instead of... But, you know, just to be able to go and, and take a look at those, those trails, you know, it was really something. God forbid I get back on a bike. I could use it. And thanks for the, thanks for the reminder on the blood pressure, doc. But that's, that's what I've gotta say. And I, and I want you guys to just, you know, this is a great process. And we're here. We're citizens just like you. And all we wanna do is what's best for us. Some of it's gonna work in our favor, not all of it. But we'll do our best. Thank you.
What's your part?
For my part, yeah. I, I support the trails, absolutely. I think, I'm glad to see everybody here. I'm glad to hear what you had to say. And I'm very glad that, because I know how tough it is for public comment as well, public speaking. I'm a little disappointed that some people left. I wish they would be here to hear what we did have to say. But be that as it may, I think the word'll get around. I support the trails as well. I would personally like to see the NTN purchase the trails. If you are someone who believes that the trails should remain absolutely as they are today, I think that's the solution. Because NTN could then do what they want with the trails. It would be up to them. But talking about what Commissioner Frazier and Commissioner Schlegel has talked about, we do represent the people who don't use the trails. And there are some people who are saying, "Why are we footing that bill?" And that's one of the reasons why we're looking at taking it off of the rolls. Yes, we do have to reduce debt. But there are some people saying, you know, "Why are we footing that bill when the people who use the trail should foot the bill?" I, I don't know if you want trail passes, that sort of thing. I'm not so sure that's a great idea. But personally, I would absolutely support selling the parcel, all the parcels that the NTN would like to buy, selling it to the NTN and leaving it in their hands. Because I think they are a great organization, and I think they can do a great, a great, some great things with those trails. I'm very, very aware of how important they are to the area, how important they are to the economy of Marquette. As has been said, I think we all are. When I look at development at all, I'm not looking at condos, not in any way, or apartments or anything like that. What I would look at, though, is maybe a bike shop near the trail, which I think would be helpful. Especially a bike repair shop or a bike parts shop. Might be nice to have by the trail or trailhead. Also, maybe a lunch counter or a small restaurant might be kinda nice to have as well. Something like that. So when you, when I think of development, I'm thinking of those kinds of things. I would, I would absolutely oppose any kind of high-rise apartment or anything like that, as far as that goes. You know, I also wanna reiterate, it's a long process. Somebody had mentioned that the, you know, they don't know when this has gone public. Well, this is the beginning of the public process. Here we are. We're talking about it. And the commission is here in front of you telling us how we feel and where, where we're coming from. And I agree with Mr. Ludenberger, absolutely. It's a campaign issue because it's important to the public. I disagree with, with the speaker who said, spoke about handpicked ad hoc committees. There are none. We're all about the city of Marquette. And we're all about what the people of the city of Marquette want. Again, there are some people that represent, that we represent that don't see us as, see it as our responsibility as a city to carry that debt. I do see it as our responsibility as a city, though, to preserve the trailhead. And so I, I personally, speaking for myself, want to preserve the trailhead, wanna preserve the trails as they are. I really urge anyone who wants to keep that, that way, to get with the NTN, start a process, find a way. I'd love to see the NTN purchase those, those properties. And then you have it, you do what you want with it. It's off our rolls. Case is closed. To me, that is what I'd like, that, that's the best-case scenario for, for what I see. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. And I would like to thank everybody for coming here tonight. I mean, seeing numbers like this tells us that you are concerned. And it, it does deliver the message. For what it's worth, I value the trails. I live on the south end of town. I walk my dog back there. I stay off the trails, 'cause I don't think you care to have the dog on a trail. But I see the trails, and, and they're beautiful. I mean, they're amazing. I, I can see why we win awards for trail development. I, I can see why we win awards for trail development. The beauty of it, and somebody mentioned this earlier, is just, there, there are trails that are in trees. They're not in between houses, and stores, and whatnot. They're in the trees, and it's just gorgeous. And they're, they're well-developed, and they're not, you know, put there willy-nilly. I'm thinking, I hope somebody's, someone's put some thought into the development. They're really nice trails. So I get it. I can see why people like these trails. I get it that it could draw people here. I mean, you've got to have a job, you just can't come here and ride bikes. But it is a factor in recruiting people here. So they're valuable to the community. It is a community asset. The quality of life, you know, you can't compare it. It's just, to be able to step out of your door, in five minutes, you're riding in the woods, with no fences, no gates, everything is open, we are very, very fortunate. When development comes, and that happens, you know, that's going to kill it. But let's hope it's, we don't come to that point. The dirty word here is tax base. Property tax in the city brings in about ten million a year, goes to the general fund. That money, along with other money that goes into the general fund, pays for city services, fire, police, water, sewer, and streets. You've got to have that. If you don't have it, that's number one. That's what you've got to have. Prescott Power Plant was giving us 1.6 to most million dollars a year. We're losing that. We have to make it up. If you don't have money coming in, you don't have services. You don't want to cut services. You don't want your streets to be any worse than they are. So tax base is a dirty word. I commend the city manager for trying to figure out a way to increase our tax base. We're not going to do anything devious, like put high-rises and casinos on Lot 35, Parcel 35. We do, as was mentioned, we represent you people, but we also represent the entire community. We, when we vote on something, can't vote on what we want, or what you want, we have to vote on what the community wants. No, I, I still want to keep the trails, but you know, there is a whole lot of people out there that could give a care. They really don't care, and they're probably saying, ah, spend it somewhere else. So work with us, which, we, we've got to get, everybody's got to be happy in this situation. This is the, the beginning of the process. We are not breaking ground soon. It's, it's, we're so far away from anything. We don't even know who's going to bid on this until, what, the fifteenth, perhaps, of this month? RFQs come in, then we, we are so far away from making a decision. So it's very important, you know, that we don't get upset, that we work with the, you should work with the city. It was determined many years ago, I think 2005, that that was the intent of the city, was to develop it. We had no idea that the trails were going to be as successful as they were. In fact, I went through the contract, page three, paragraph 10, says, "The NTN will work with city officials to develop trails." You know what? That never really, really happened. The city, we're, we're at fault, you guys are at fault. You should have been working together. We wouldn't be here, kind of like buttonheads. You know, we, we should have been working together more on this. I don't think we'd be in this situation that we are tonight. It's a starting process. We want to work with you. Give us time. Have your guys work with city manager staff. You know, I think that we can have a good outcome here. You know, thirty, Parcel 35 is precious. I, I know it. It's just, you know, we, we do need tax base, you know, but let's, maybe something could be worked out. If you work with us, we can get it worked out. That's all I've got to say. Anybody else, city manager, you have something?
Just a couple of quick notes. First of all, there were a few comments early on about the public process, and having a public planning process. We have followed the public planning process. It's, it's what, I lost it now, but it's what the, this is here, this is the public planning, planning process. And I think what the master plan is referring to are the properties that were identified as purple on the maps, which are, they have a future consideration designation, or something in that area. If we were going to look to develop those, then a new public process would be, need to be engaged. And lastly, just to remind everybody, and, and ask you to pay attention, not to me now, oh yeah, now, to me, but overall, that there's probably going to be a few work sessions with the city commission through this whole process. Work sessions are something that we put together when Dennis and I might come forward with a plan, or an idea, or a concept. You know, we discuss it with the commission, get feedback. No decisions are made, but it helps guide us in the directions we need to go with whatever topic it is. So I see a few work sessions through this whole process. Normally, we publicize them on our website, we publicize them in the newspaper, things of that nature. And I'm sure if NTN is working with me on this process, you folks who are involved with NTN should, should know. So there will be opportunities along the way for more input, more feedback, and long before a, a decision is made. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioners, anybody else? Kind of said it all. Huh? Okay, we can end this discussion. I don't, do you need a motion?
You don't need a motion. You, you go to the next agenda.
Just move, move on. Thank you. So that ends that. Next item. Thank you. Our next item is the... Next item is development of stormwater management plan. City clerk, could you please give us the background on that?
Thank you, sir. Background, the city of Marquette was awarded a Stormwater Asset Management and Wastewater Grant, SAW grant, December 3, 2015. The total amount of the grant is $1,080,669. A component of the grant is development of a stormwater management plan. The city of Marquette, through the SAW grant, has been working on a comprehensive review of the stormwater utility. Components of the review included, include the stormwater ordinance, financial plan, and a field inventory of the stormwater infrastructure. The goal of the stormwater management plan is to retain a consultant that has experience in stormwater systems, like the city of Marquette's, and to meet the requirements of the SAW grant. Key components of the stormwater management plan are included in the attached scope of services. A request for qualifications was advertised on May 21, 2018. Three consultants submitted responses. The RFQ is evaluated by city staff consisting, consisting of the city hydrologist, director of municipal utilities, and the director of public works. The evaluation scores are as follows. STANTEC Consulting, Ann Arbor, Michigan, 260 points. GEI Consultants, Marquette, Michigan, 231 points. UP Engineers and Architects, Ishburn, Michigan, 197 points. STANTEC Consulting is a full-service engineering firm located in Ann Arbor, Michigan. The project team represents a combination of stormwater master planning, and a financial analysis experts for the SAW, SAW stormwater management plan. Included in the RFQ is a component that STANTEC Consulting will partner with the Superior Watership Partnership to develop and implement the public involvement and education plans as required by the SAW grant stormwater management plan. Completion of the stormwater management plan has a deadline of October 1, 2018. Fiscal effect, $100,000 is available through the Marquette, Michigan Department of Environmental, Environmental Quality for the stormwater management plan. Recommendation, authorize the city manager to negotiate a final scope of services and enter into a contract with STANTEC Consulting for not to exceed an amount of $100,000 to develop a stormwater management plan per SAW grant requirements. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Okay, Mr. Meister, I believe you wish to address us?
Yeah, thank you. You know, one of the things, I guess I, I think about, and I was thinking about it as, there was a gentleman talking about value earlier, was, you know, if you look at value, it's getting the most for your money, and, or, or whatever you're, you're, you're using. Our score came out very close to STANTEX. We think maybe if we had worded some things differently, or presented some information differently, staff would agree with us that we believe that we're more qualified, and that we're, as well, are more qualified than our competitors. But one of the big things to look at is, you've got a finite amount of money available on this grant. There's up to $100,000 to spend. You know, we're a local company. We're here, you know, and we don't have travel expenses with mileage and time, and lodging per diem, all that sort of thing, that's going to take off from the top of what you're actually getting at the end of the day. We'll be able to put more time and effort into the final product. You know, another benefit, we're right here. If Kurt or his staff isn't happy with what we're doing, he can come down and shake us up and let us know. You know, if, if there's something that needs to be changed, or something that comes up, you know, right now, it was a statement of qualifications. The scope is somewhat yet to be defined. It helps to have somebody who's here, understands the city, and how, and its workings, and that stormwater portion of it already. To be able to go out and look at something, or evaluate something, or just meet with the staff, to have those conversations, to develop this, and really get the, the most bang for your buck out of this. And it's grant money on top of that, which is great, but it's still important to get the most value you can out of it. It's not something that comes around every day for, for this sort of thing. You know, another part of this is Superior Watershed Partnership is, was brought up. It's, it's in the SOQ, or Statement of Qualification, or Request for Qualifications. We interpret it as being part of the project that's in there, and so we didn't re-ergitate that back necessarily. As, as I discussed, when some questions were asked, we would absolutely use them, partner with them. In fact, we currently are working with them on several projects, as it is, working for them. One of them is actually a city property for a wetlands development project, and stormwater improvement project already. We have a long working relationship with them. I've been working with them, and our company's been working with them for years. And, and the other thing that I'd like to bring up, that I, that I think that we really bring, that, you know, our competitors can't, is local UP experience. You know, the projects that we're talking about are Michigan-based, they're Upper Peninsula-based, you know, the, the SAW grant portions of the projects that we've done, the financial analysis, you know, the rate determinations, things like that, that they recommend and reviewed out of this, are something we're doing with many of our other communities and neighbors here in the UP. You know, just around here, Nagani, County Marquette, Ishburn, Maine, others across the UP. So we're really well-versed in this. We're very good at it. And I think we can do a really good job, and, and give you the most value for this project. So that's, that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Plord, huh? Commissioner Smith?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city, city manager to negotiate a final scope of services and enter into a contract with GEI Consultants for not to exceed an amount of $100,000 to develop a stormwater management plan per SAW grant requirements.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Plord?
I second.
Discussion. Commissioner Smith?
I poured over the sheets comparing, and I didn't see a whole lot of difference, other than maybe some wording in some aspect of financial analysis. I, I did some more research and found that it seems like you guys are, are fit for the job. Would like to do a local person, if we can, local group. And I agree that the travel expenses is a piece that we would lose out on if we went with a, a fair amount of Ann Arbor, because it's limited to $100,000, whether we spend that on travel or on your time. So I appreciate you coming and, and making a stance on that, but I was planning to do that whether or not you were here.
Thank you. Commissioner Plord?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I'm, I'm glad to see you guys here as well. It's gratifying to me to see you fight for a job, which I feel, I feel like you're doing. I've spoken to some city, city people, and they say you do do a fine job. And I'm glad for the information that you brought to the commission meeting, qualifying what you said, what you didn't say, what you might have said. I think that's very important as well. I also think it's important that when you talk about, there's no per diem, and no other expenses, we're going to get the full amount for our grant. And I also like the idea that you're, you're, you're very local, and that you're working with other Upper Peninsula organizations to do the same kind of thing. So thank you for coming to the meeting. Thank you for pleading your case, letting us know some of the things that we, that you felt like we needed to know, and maybe we didn't know, which is very, very important. So that's why I'm supporting the, the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Reynolds?
Well, I appreciate the motion. Commissioner Smith and I, we have worked with GEI in the past, and I appreciate all the work they do here in Marquette. But I do have two questions, and I just want to make sure, before I move forward, and I don't have a problem with Commissioner Smith's motion, for Kurt. One, as far as, as Mr. Meister brought forward, why didn't we consider location in the RFP process? And the other question is, this hasn't happened very often, where we switch. What happens if we choose the organization that technically scored less points? I don't know if that's a question directed towards you, or...
One thing, yeah, this is a process, have you heard quite a bit tonight, is the RFQ process. And what we're asking for is a recommendation to enter into a negotiation to define the scope of services. One thing about, by going this process, it gives us a lot of flexibility. Even though it states that we have up to $100,000 to, for the SAW grant, it doesn't mean we're going to spend $100,000. So that's a key component of, as, as we negotiate the scope. As for the local, that was, we looked at the job requirements of the SAW grant. A lot of the field work has been completed already. We do have the mapping, we do have some of the, I guess, it's a lot of administration, there's going to be a lot of writing with that. So we really looked at some project, you know, references that have similar type. What Mr. Meister did say was 100% correct, having a local, you know, person, that does help. I do think, you know, we can work with GEI, you know, you know, work through it, and I have no problem with that. But we did, I know when I, the team did evaluate the, the RFQs, I did consider local as, in, in some of my responses, you know, evaluation criteria.
Thank you, Kurt.
Commissioner Frazier?
I also am a big supporter of going local. I mean, every time we see these, you know, projects for, you know, roundabouts or towns somewhere, I always see, you know, other companies from a town outbidding local companies. I'm like, oh, it's too bad, because, I mean, one of the local companies got outbid, and it was a project like, right down the street from their property. So I was like, and I'm glad that you guys came forward and said, hey, look, just give a second chance. And you're, Kurt, you know, Kurt's a phone call away. Or he might come knock on your door and say, hey, would you please come down to my office, bring some nosepins, you know, and, you know, I don't know if you'd really go, he'd probably prefer to come, you'd probably, so come to our office, don't go to his office, you know, it's a very fun place out there. But I think it's a great idea, and you guys are great to deal with me. You guys at the Ordox study, and you guys are dangling and videoing and stuff like that, you guys are great on that. And it's like, see, the stormwater, like I said, I'm in the process of, I'm in the boarding community, so I'm a different, you know, everybody else is a seasonal community up there. But I saw, we launched a boat at my dad's property, and I picked up a whole garb, a whole five-gown bucket full of cigarette butts, at least twenty or thirty. I know they're from the, nothing to do with the, the boaters, people, it's all from the storm, from the roads. People out here are all about trails, and the city, and the nature, and stuff like that. I mean, look at us. Think about, every time you throw something on the road, it gets washed into the drains, and goes out in the lake. Picked up twenty, I could tell they're from the stormwaters, I even asked the city manager, is there anything for like, filters? He said, well, filters get plugged very easily. So just one thing to think about, you're doing this process, just think about, okay, how can we keep stuff, I mean, obviously, other than keep people from throwing those cigarettes in the road, which would be the biggest thing, like Commissioner Plord said. Other people said, you know, hey, I live in town, I get, clean up at least ten cigarette butts on my yard all the time. You know, just think about that. Everything you throw on the, your road, you throw on the road, gets washed into the lake eventually. So just think about that, you know. So I think it's great you guys are local, and go for the project, and just stay at Kurt's office. We're not very fun down there.
I'll be last. Yeah, that's true. Kurt, I've got one question, so yes or no, you can probably shoot it from there. Is there any reason to think that you will get any less of a value working with these guys than the other guys from, from U of M? Or I should say, from Ann Arbor?
Like, like George said, that if we have a problem, and the work is progressing, and we're not, we're not seeing the results, that... You know, the objectives of the grant, that's the key.
Sure.
One thing, also in their RFQ, they did said, they could, they would pull in outside resources, if it becomes a little bit more specialized. I thought that was a good part of their RFQ. But I, I don't anticipate any, you know, you know, problems with the quality of work.
Sounds good to me. Keeping it local's key. It's pretty big to have a U of M grad go ahead and make the motion here.
Whew, man.
Somebody owes somebody a ham sandwich. Thank you.
If this were to be a bidding process, it would be very difficult to not go with the lowest bidder. But because it's a... the lowest bidder, but because it's a not-to-exceed, I feel very comfortable supporting GEI. Uh, I found that, I hate to say after the facts, some items, facts were brought out that, uh, they are, have better qualifications than what we did see on the initial, um, request. And to me, that makes a big difference. Uh, they, uh, they are as, we've had experience with GEI, and, and they're as qualified, they're as qualified as perhaps any other decent engineering firm in the area, in the state. Uh, the points difference, what, 30, 29 points difference, and that's pretty subjective. And, and I do, you know, appreciate that Standic, uh, applied, and, uh, I do appreciate them, but they're not here tonight. You guys are here. That makes a big impression on me. You know, you're here, you want the business, that says something. And you're local. I mean, you are local, you're gonna spend your money here. That's important to a city like Marquette that doesn't have that much business going on comparatively speaking, compared to downstate where you have dense population and, you know, lots of businesses and lots of ability to have business. So, we need to support what we have, because it's not to exceed, I don't mind at all, you know, seeing you guys get to work. So I think I will be supporting you. Commissioners, anybody else? Anybody else? Uh, Commissioner Smith, before we vote on it, could you just state it again, just so we're clear on what your, uh, motion is?
Yes, you ma, thank you, Mayor. Give me a second, I had already moved on to the next item on my packet here.
I mean, just so we know.
I know, I'm just trying to get back to the right page.
You didn't memorize that?
You didn't remember it, come on, memorize it. You won't say it properly.
Or clerk, yeah, clerk can do that, huh? I'm sorry.
I've got it, I've got it.
Let the clerk do it, clerk should do it. Right? Clerk, clarify it.
Recommendation to authorize the city manager to negotiate a final scope of services and enter into a contract with GEI Consulting for a not-to-exceed amount of $100,000 to develop a stormwater management plan per SAW grant requirements.
Thank you.
Yes.
That's the motion, it's been seconded. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
opposed, carries 6-0. Congratulations.
Thank you all very much for the support, we really appreciate it.
You're a good judge. Okay, our last new business item of the evening is the Lakeview Arena Evaluation Study, the Professional Services Contract Award. And if the city clerk could give us that background, please.
Thank you, Mayor, background. Excuse me. Lakeview Arena was named Kraft Hockey Bell USA in 2016 and awarded $150,000 along with hosting an NHL preseason game. While some of those funds were used in preparation for the game, $90,848.21 remain. It was determined that the best way to proceed with using these funds was to bring in a professional engineering firm with sports center and experience to evaluate this facility. In order to not have redundancies, staff felt it was important to delay this process until the full scope of the Johnson Controls, Inc., JCI Citywide Initiative for Facility Efficiencies was known and the project underway. The goal of this evaluation study would be to prioritize many of the needs of Lakeview Arena not covered by the JCI project. The study will then be used to find grants that are applicable to the highest priorities outlined and the best leverage the prize money as matching funds for the grants. An RFP was first advertised on March 12th, 2018, and responses opened on March 29th, 2018. The city received one proposal that was significantly, significantly over the $10,000 budget. A second RFP with clarifying information regarding the budget and scope was advertised on April 19th, 2018, and opened on May 24th, 2018. All-Star Arenas was the only proposal with a price of $10,000. Fiscal effect, the city commission approved the budget, budget including $10,000 for this plan. Recommendation, approve the All-Star Arenas proposal with a not-to-exceed fee of $10,000 to conduct the Lakeview Arena Evaluation Study and direct the city attorney to develop a professional services agreement. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Plard.
Your Honor, I move that we approve the All-Star Arenas proposal with a not-to-exceed fee of $10,000 to conduct the Lakeview Arena Evaluation Study and direct the city attorney to develop a professional service agreement.
Thank you, is there a second? Commissioner Frazier.
Second.
Is there any comment? Commissioner Plard.
Just to say, Your Honor, again, this is a, a illustration of how we are using our money and taking our time to spend our money. Uh, All-Star Arenas is going to give us a lot of good ideas about what we can do to improve Lakeview Arena, which we want to do. Uh, again, Lakeview Arena is another gem that we have in the city that's important to so many people. So, uh, this really is, uh, an illustration of the city taking the time to take a real good look at spending the money, how we want to spend the money the best way possible.
Mr. Frazier, anything?
Another opportunity for everybody, a building that everybody enjoys, and not everybody uses the building, but everybody enjoys it, and just 'cause it's another group of people like the, the people that supported the, their forest property tonight. So, the hockey players are just a different generation, I mean, they grew up, you know, before they could walk, they're skating and playing hockey since they were two years old, till they're like Mike's age, and they're still trying to play hockey, and we had Pigs in Heat, we got hockey pla, we got firemen versus police, it's a good, good community, and the building is used by so much, so much different people, it's good to finally put some money into, if it's basically been a, like boater say, a hole in the water, sink money into, it's been a hole in the land we've been sinking money into for a long time to have to keep it up, and now we're finally making it work and making it in good, so I'm glad we're finally getting some done, work to it.
Mr. Schlegel.
I just think, um, I just wanted to make it a point to say that I think it was great to wait to move forward until the JCI stuff was taken care of. Um, you're really maximizing the dollars that we got through that, that great, uh, Hockey Bell USA thing, so instead of, um, you know, the new chillers and all that stuff that have been installed for, uh, because of the, the JCI project, now we can put this in another area that's just gonna make it, uh, you know, just maximize the dollars, because it doesn't go that far, you know, 90,000, 95,000, whatever the total is after with the payment for this, is not, uh, is not gonna make it, I don't want to say Joe Louis Arena, but Little Caesar's Arena, so, thanks for, uh, the foresight.
Any other comment? City manager.
Just a note for the record that this $10,000 is not coming from the Hockey Bill money, this is out of the budget for the Lakeview Arena, so we're not spending that money on this process.
Gotcha.
Safe to say we budgeted that previously? Well, I mean, sometimes it just comes out of nowhere. We did, Kurt, everybody.
Shaking the tree, Gary.
Okay, we're gonna vote on this. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That carries 6-0. Next, we come to our second and last public comment of the evening. Again, a time that citizens, residents can address the commission. I'm gonna open public comment. Uh, you have three minutes, um, your name if you haven't given it to us previously.
Franchaferto, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, these are my opinions. May 29th, our chance to speak to consent items as extended to us only recently was removed for unsound reasons. I'd even thanked the board for instituting this long-requested change, you know, trying to be positive. The attorney misspoke when he said the mayor felt it was a bad idea. I mean, this mayor wouldn't know one way or another. The truth is, Mr. Stonehouse felt it was a bad idea, as evident on May 14th. Upon my being called up to speak on a consent item, Mr. Stonehouse briefly whispered his disapproval to the chair. May 29th, he said no one ever spoke to a consent item during his previous six years on this board. No one spoke to it because it wasn't allowed. His rationale on the more efficient running of meetings was also flawed, because only two people ever used the opportunity, once each, time wasn't a factor. Consent items are supposed to be items that no one would comment on anyway, but the record shows this isn't always the case. Mr. Stonehouse offered us a lot of smooth talk with no substance. My one time up, I'd spoken to the Arbor Day Proclamation, which was supposed to be read like the other two proclamations that night. Items that belong under business occasionally appear on the consent agenda. The two members who meet with the manager to assemble our agendas were not on the ball then or for tonight's agenda. Another man was the first to reserve time for a consent item, so I seized my chance to alert the public that the Arbor Day item was hidden in the consent agenda as unimportant, real transparent. Several years ago, they quit even reading the outline of our consent agendas, again under public protest. Mrs. Reynolds and Smith are thanked for realizing the importance of this opportunity and for making evident the mentality of this male-dominated board. Mr. Schlegel's vote was a major disappointment in that he bought into the unsound reasoning. He is reminded of two members in 2005 who fell into the clutches of two former mayors and ended up recalled right along with them. History repeats itself too much around here, like Lake Shoreside, Founders, and now Hartwood. Please keep Mr. Stonehouse out of the mayoral seat for too many reasons to recount in the allotted time, although it seems imminent, those details will be republificized. We'd end with three alleged ill-fit mayors in a row, not counting Mr. Baldini, who held the office for only a month before passing on in one of Marquette's status misfortunes. Oddly, Mr. Stonehouse chose not to disclose the real reason for his disapproval of consent comments, that being his fear of Frank ripping this board for three extra minutes. Gutlessness in its most rudimentary form. Don't give us this transparency nonsense. And here I thanked them for the consent opportunity. Well, my sincere thank you is retracted. Thank you for nothing.
Uh, hello, Matt Ludberger, 1406 Garfield Ave. here in Marquette. First and foremost, I guess, what happened with Hartfield, or Hartwood project? Uh, I didn't hear a motion, um, was it a, a foregone conclusion that we're sending this out for RFPs? Do we actually have an official go-ahead from the city commissioners? Um, and I ask all this as procedure questions, because if I am elected and I do get the option to sit on the board here with you, these are questions I would like to ask, um, before we move on, are, at the same time. That's not why I'm here, I'm here to tell you about why I would like to run for city commission, and in the last three years, I have been trying to figure out a way to help the city reuse and revitalize the We Energies Power Plant that has been pointed out tonight, we're gonna be losing that revenue, uh, and the hospital, uh, the Marquette General Hospital power, uh, area. Both of those have been a concern of mine. Every time I come up with one of these folders, it means I've had a conversation with a developer who's in here. Uh, there are about 50 projects that all have approvals and funds already for their projects, they're just looking for locations. Uh, all of these are typically for space and environmental projects and concerns. That is what I, I think we as a community can capitalize on. Uh, we have a golden opportunity here, we have a building that has a lot of space, we can use for a lot of different reasons, not just these ideas in this book, and that's kind of the point. Nobody's gonna give, and I've tried this, nobody in town is gonna give a guy with a broken glass and wearing sandals $100 million to start a project because there's tax liability issue that we don't know about. Every year, those two projects go through a tax tribunal case. I would, and it's unfortunate Mr. Stonehouse is here because he's an expert in this, I would like to see the city figure out a way, because I, I can't do it, but I've got definitely funds to help out with this, um, to figure out a way to, to purchase those two properties for a dollar. We did it with the Lighthouse, um, Lakeview Arena, I don't remember how much that was, but I'd even accept a million-dollar bond for those two properties individually. I can make it back in a year, two years. Ford Motor Company wants to have a test site for their auto, or for their, um, electric vehicles. They need cold temperatures, it doesn't really work that well in, when it's always Florida. This is a prime example. We could have a central location at the hospital that could be a place where you go and rent electric vehicles for the day in the city of Marquette. You go there and you pick up a trolley that takes you around the city of Marquette, run by electricity that's powered by the, uh, We Energies Power Plant. I've got 10 seconds, and here's the bottom line, when you control the income, you control the outcome, and you guys have been doing that all night long. I wish you could turn the hospital and the power plant into a zone like you do the DDA, like you did Lakeview, and like you do the Lighthouse. We have a gem here, please let us exploit it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Amy Moss, I live at 332 East Michigan Street. Um, I attended, a few months back when we discussed the recycling policy, and I found these meetings incredibly interesting. So here I am again, um, not only to explain my position regarding the South Trails, um, and the properties that are up for RFQ, um, but also because I find it interesting, I find it engaging, and I find myself wondering, um, many of the questions that people address through their comments. Um, I, I think the, the tax implications are interesting, um, and very real, and I guess the only thing I have to add in addition to everything everyone else said is, um, kind of stems from, from what he said, is, is what are we doing with our properties that were bringing in tax revenue? What are we looking at? How can we look at these properties and, and do something with these properties to earn income? Um, these are properties that are already, um, probably considered brownfield. Um, we have the hospital property, what are we going to do with that? Um, and, and is it worth really creatively thinking what we can do with these areas to improve our community and increase our tax base without touching this virgin forest that we have there? That's my issue. My issue is not just the bike trails, the hiking trails, although I will tell you, I moved here six years ago, um, from Emmett County, and they do a lot right in, in Emmett County. I think Marquette does a lot right as well, and what Marquette draws is the, the raw nature that I can access, um, from my house by biking three miles either way. Um, we run from the house, we run three miles down to the South Trails, we run two more miles into the woods, and then run back to the house, and those are areas that are just priceless, and if there's any way we can figure out a way to leave it untouched, um, I think that will impact the generations to come, um, not to mention the natural resources that will be incredibly valuable, um, the longer they're preserved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else wish to address this commission? Seeing none, we're gonna close public comment, we're gonna move to comments from the commission. We will start with Commissioner Smith.
So, on Sunday, I had the opportunity to meet with the Hiawatha Music Cooperative as a representative of the city commission to help them improve and plan for their future, so that was an interesting experience, and I'm looking forward to that festival this year, look forward to seeing some changes and what they plan to do for the future. Um, one other piece, I just wanted to mention that there is a Marquette City Band Concert this Thursday at 7:30 at the Prescott Park, I would encourage folks to attend, attend that, we have a wonderful city band, and the outdoor venue is a great way to spend an evening. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Frazier.
But a fun meeting for everybody. We all loved it. I mean, even the city, the city learned all kinds of stuff, we learned all kinds of stuff about how much people care about the area, which we know, just everybody loves our area, which I love to see, and, you know, just a different community for everybody. I mean, some people are hockey people, some people are marine people, some people are hikers, boat, I mean, everybody's got a different version of how they love Marquette, why they moved to Marquette, you know, and that's what I love to see, let's see, how, you know, even the, I have friends that are trail bikers, and I've had friends that walk their dogs, but then the other side, I have people that ride their bikes up there and get attacked by dogs, which is, I mean, the city has rules, they, no dogs off-leash, and everybody's got attacked several times riding his bike on your lovely trails, get attacked by a dog. It's crazy. And the guy said, oh, sorry, my dog attacked you, he's got scars on his leg, you know, and his, his kid doesn't like riding anymore, 'cause he's seen dad too many accidents and bikes, you know, but, just saying, and, you know, same thing is, I'm a big boater, and 'cause I work in the marine industry, and where the city was gonna redevelop Prescott Marina, I said, well... I said, well, what about, I don't like this option. It's too small, you're gonna lose boaters. They said, they proved me, said, hey, we could spend more, but it would cost more, and what about all the people that don't use marinas? What the tax base, like, like we've said, that don't use the Hartwood Forest, that don't use this property, what about them? That's what we have to consider. That's why I said, okay, I backed off of my comments, I said, well, the boaters have to deal with it, and people, I mean, they pay for, they pay for it, but, I mean, it's gonna be, it's fair to the other people that don't use the property not to have to pay for it. I agree with that. And just, maybe, as I said, maybe we don't cover it, maybe we'll put a bike casino at the trailhead. You could win a bike or a hiking trip or something like that. You could have slot machines that look like bikes, who knows? You know, somebody get creative and have a bike casino, you could win, all the money goes back in the trailhead, kinda like the, the Ghibli casinos, all the money goes back to the community for them. Build a casino there, what the heck? What the heck?
Thank you. Commissioner Schlegel?
I'm sure that was in jest, Pete. Thank you to the NTN members and everybody else that's associated with the trail system for coming out and giving us a piece of their mind tonight. We did not disappoint. I think that this is the beginning of a, of a good process that's going to, I think, again, to reiterate it, end up serving both sides of the, of the alvery successfully here in the future. Same as last, last meeting, it is officially summer, the kids are out in force. My daughter put on about seven, eight miles today walking around town. Please be careful. Slow down at the crosswalks. Make sure that you're paying attention for all the, the tourists and everybody that's coming around, and keep things safe for the summer. Thank you.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Sorry, I wasn't ready. Okay, all good. Couple things. One, I also appreciated everyone being here. As a commissioner, early on, it was actually when I ran for commission, when I first ran, Hartwood was a question I was constantly asked about and how I continued to feel about it. And I still continue to feel the same. If it was just me, I probably would take Parcel 35 off and just make everyone happy, but I don't think that that's something we can do. But I understand the passion and everything behind the NTN, and I sit here tonight as we voted $10,000 to pay for hockey, and then, as Pete mentioned, we're doing something for Prescott, and I think of those activities, and we're kind of, I, I feel like I'm being short-sighted when I'm looking at the trails. That's just me. So also, when, excellent point brought up about the hospital. City manager, we haven't had the hospital come here in like, since both of these two have been commissioners, and they're supposed to come and update us every three months on the progress of the old hospital. And it kind of, we've been really busy with other things that, as Ms. Moss brought up, it kind of brought it back to me as well. So, I'm asking you to, hopefully, maybe we can do that. Other than that, that is all I got, and I'm glad everyone came tonight.
I can answer part of that question right now, is that I know that this week, there are meetings in Nashville with potential developers for the old hospital location. At least one, maybe two. I know there's two developers left out of three that were initially part of that process. But you are correct in that we haven't had the hospital here in a while. They've been somewhat busy with other things, but I have been speaking to them, with them, and meeting with them regularly, so I will certainly schedule an update in the near future.
Thank you. Commissioner Plard?
Also want to thank people who came tonight. I agree with Commissioner Frazier. It's kind of exciting to see people come and express their, their concerns and tell us what's on their mind. And certainly, also acknowledge the, the issues that we have to deal with as city commissioners. We do, I definitely appreciate that, that you acknowledge that. I, I don't feel like we're being short-sighted with the Hartwood Forest issue because it's just a long, long process, and it's gonna be very, very public, very open. I will tell you that the information that, that, everything that we do as far as a city commission or a city is public. It's, it's on the website, there are people you can call. If you, if you believe that you're short of information, find the people to call, ask them, they will respond. Same thing, my website, or my email is on the city website. Send me an email. I answer every email I get. I answered probably, I want to say 35 emails specifically about the Hartwood Forest. I answered every one of them individually. It is your responsibility to find the information. It's our responsibility to put it out there, but we can't make you read it if you don't want to. If you don't want to pursue it, you don't want to find it, there's nothing we can do about that, because we do put it out there. So it is your responsibility to educate yourself about what, what's happening or the, the issues that concern you. And again, coming to a meeting, thank you, Ms. Moss, for your comments about finding the meetings engaging and, and kind of exciting and that, I think that's, that's pretty cool. I mean, we do have high school students come in from time to time, and they say the same thing. We like, I like to think that that's the case, but tonight is a real, real good example of democracy at work. People coming in, saying what they wanted to say, telling the government what the message is, and other people being here to support them. Just because you didn't step up to the podium doesn't mean that you, your voice is not heard. Trust me, we saw all of you, especially when everybody was coming in and we had to make room for people. I thought that was pretty cool, too, as well. So, thank you very, very much for that. Please, keep doing that. Let us know what you want. My last comment on, I'm gonna make tonight is, yes, please understand that we do represent everybody, and not everybody wants to come to the meeting and stand at the podium and tell us the opposite of what they think the other 30 people here want to hear. That doesn't mean they don't contact us, that doesn't mean that we don't represent them, because we do, and we do take that very, very seriously. So, just to let you know, but thank you.
Thank you. Well, tonight was, you know, an important night for the NTN and the city. It, it was good to see the people show up. It was a great show of support. I think we got a message, and I hope that this evolves into a good relationship between the NTN and the city, which we do need for anything to happen here. This weekend, I didn't buy my tickets. I believe it's the Rotary Fish Boil. Can somebody verify that? It is? Okay. A fundraiser for the Rotary, which gives money back. It's, it's a wonderful meal. I would, if you're not doing anything Saturday night, consider going. Lastly, and I, and I hate to waste valuable time, but there's a person here that comes to every meeting and does nothing but criticize and complain 99.9% of the time. Mr. Verito attacked Commissioner Stonehouse, who's not here, which I don't appreciate. He says that Commissioner Stonehouse was responsible for the policy of not speaking to the consent agenda. That was my decision. It was not Commissioner Stonehouse. And to say that it's not transparent means, Mr. Verito, you weren't paying attention at the last meeting, because we discussed this. It's totally transparent. At any time, you can speak to it. You got two public comments where you can speak to it. If you want it pulled, you just talk to a commissioner and we'll pull it. So, don't say we're trying to hide anything or trying to do anything devious. The other thing is, every two or three meetings, I ask people if they'll be considerate enough to join committees. This is what makes Marquette great, people volunteer. I asked them, they've got 20 committees to join, and what does he do? And this is the second time, he says, don't volunteer, volunteer on something else. No, that's pretty negative, and I don't want to hear that. I'm doing my best to get these committees built up, and then a guy comes along and says, don't join. What's that tell you about him? I don't see you as joining a committee or applying for a committee. Have you ever applied for a committee? Really? Want to apply for another one?
Never.
Keep your comments quiet. Okay, that's all I have. City manager?
Three quick things. Open office hours Wednesday this week, 10:00 a.m., Peterway Public Library. It's the Yellow Room. Dandelion Room. Thank you. I knew it had something to do with yellow. At the Peterway Public Library. You may have, anybody who may have been trying to use the public restrooms at Mattson Park this week, we had them closed for repairs. They should be repaired tomorrow. We had to wait for a, a special part. And I'm sorry that so many people have to miss my brief explanation on fun with flags. We get calls kind of regularly about the flags that are in Mattson Park and that the United States flag is not at the top of the pole. And just to point out that that flag configuration that is there now is proper. Because the flag pole has a gaff, which is a protruding pole on an angle, the US flag goes on the gaff, and then the city flag goes on the topmost mast. So, I've had a few people actually, quite a few in the last week or so, comment or call, so I just wanted to clarify that. John has done a wonderful job of researching it, and Fred, I think, mentioned during a recent email exchange that it's quite proper. So, thank you.
Thank you. We are adjourned.